Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. We're waiting on a couple of board members to show up, but we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and begin. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is the twenty six, twenty seven, twenty sixth of February, April. Still feels like that sometimes, of April, and it's six oh four P M. So we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Finch, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Communications?
No communications for the study session.
All right, discussion items, director's report.
All right, we have this evening continued with our director report. We've had directors for our study sessions in the past. This evening we'll have Tim Kritzlow, Director of Facilities, give an annual report here from the Facilities Department. And then following Tim, we'll have Director of Communication, Amy Forrest, and looking forward to Amy's presentation on communication. So first we'll start with Tim, and we do not have a PowerPoint. We have a nice packet here that Tim put together for us. We'll go ahead and have Tim do his presentation.
Good evening. I'll apologize first because I don't have the PowerPoint, the fancy stuff, so it's an old school presentation here. Um, three main things I'd like to talk about tonight is personnel projects and I already forgot the other one. So first off, we've been looking at personnel changes and trying to make the department a little more efficient. So you can see here some of the, some of the changes I want to make. We've always had a lot, it was a part-time locksmith. Now our locksmith is locksmith, and he's supposed to be a groundskeeper, but he does zero groundskeeping because he's busy doing the locks. We have a lot of electronic locks, more door hardware. He's busy doing that, and then part of his job is also custodial equipment to service that. So he's busy, so we lose that groundskeeper. So we'd like to move him to a full-time box smith and get a, get a groundskeeper back. And then as we go down, you can see the other requests, the custodians, we used to have a ten to sixty shift that helped out. Clean up after breakfast and whatnot. Right now, the day custodians are swamped with, we're serving more breakfast, we're serving more students. So it's really taken away from the ability to maintain the buildings the way they should be. Back in two thousand eleven or twelve, I believe it was, we lost six custodians to budget cuts, and we've replaced one of them. So I think we need to take a good, a good look at, at the custodial manpower. If you go back up there, A, I'm skipping that. I think that's being addressed, I'm hoping. So the positions of custodians, like Summit View and Apple Valley with their increased students, it's, it's really difficult for them to do that. Several years ago, a painter position was approved, but there was no funds approved for paint tools or a truck to, to let that person go to work. So we, we've just left that in, unfilled at this time. After thirty-three years, our secretary in the department, Lori Alderman, is retiring, and so she will be missed come June tenth. And it does seem to me that a lot of positions are filled, and we've been waiting for these positions for six to eight years. So I think with Joe's help, I think we might be able to put a good program together, a good proposal for that. The facilities department budget has shrank a lot, and then it has come back, and it's come back very steady. Over the last few years, we've had it, we've had a good, strong budget. But this year, with the cost of materials and whatnot skyrocketing, inflation is eating away everything that we, we gain. So it's really difficult to go judge summer work and stuff based on what we're going to have, just because of the expensive stuff. So we've kind of slowed down, we're doing the best we can, but you know, money's always a, an issue. Capital projects. We've gone around and around. One of the things that the district needs to be aware of is that there was a House Bill twenty-seven fifty-seven that was passed. They say back in nineteen, clean, clean buildings performance standards. We have a lot of updating that we need to do to our ventilation in our buildings. It's not going to be cheap. We've worked with Apollo to, to come up with many projects for schools to, to enhance that, but the price tag is, is, is high. So we need to keep working on that and keep that in mind that it needs to be, we need to be in compliance, I believe it's by twenty twenty-seven. So. We're working on getting a portable put in back at the Mountain View, met with the architect today, same architect that did the previous portables out there. Hopefully to put this one, it'll be a lot of cut and paste. He's going to provide a proposal for us, and we'll be able to get going on that, hopefully. We are permitted already through the county for three portables, so we should be able to breeze through the reviews and whatnot. So hopefully we'll be able to get this in. One of the big problems with what we're doing is that I've been working with Pacific Mobile, and they're trying to hold a slot for us, but they're filling up really fast too for the summer, so there may be some delays because of that. The other capital improvement items listed there are items on the list that we need to look at. If you have any questions on those, I'll be happy to answer them, but basically they're, they're just kind of the things we're looking at. The two that are most important to me is district-wide roof maintenance. We've looked at companies and, and we've had proposals for roofing companies to come in and do a thorough P M-type work. Seal everything, inspect everything. Several of our roofs, Cottonwood, White Hollow, they're getting up there in age, they're going to need the replacement. White Hollow, we have replaced the gym and part of the teacher's area, so we've got some big expenses coming up and a lot of work to do there, but. We always do. The other one that's an interest to me, maybe not an interest to everybody, but is to, back in two thousand eight, when we saved the old auto shop building for the maintenance building, and the idea and the plan was to develop the old maintenance shop into a, a central office, a professional building. I believe very strongly that that needs to be done. It's a lot of money, but I believe the district needs a professional office space for their people to do the, the business work. Jade, the, the concrete and asphalt in your packet, there's some pricing and bidding for a company that has gone out and inspected all of our sidewalks. Anything over a quarter of an inch state marked, and then they want to come in and be able to grind that. Our concrete in many areas is in very poor shape, safety concerns for tripping. Not that grinding everything down to an ADA standard would prevent people from tripping, but it's a sixty-two thousand dollar bill. It's very expensive. But I think throughout the district, we do have issues. We've replaced concrete sections. But we replaced one and two years later, the one next to it's bad, so there's a lot of concrete we need to look at in parking lots. And the asphalt, specifically central office is basically held together with car right now, so we need to make, make some decisions on that stuff. High school tennis courts. You'll see some quotes in there about the high school tennis courts. There's one picture in there of the tennis ball in, in the crack. That is an expansion joint that was cut into the asphalt. It is broke free, and that's the worst one. And if you go to the other courts, they start shrinking a little bit, but we're still at inch and inch and a quarter on the, on the smallest expansion joint. So the quotes are in there to, to try to get that taken care of. Another expensive one, the high school track, there's quotes in there for that to show what they're going to do. And I, there's questions about what we need to do with the tracks, so. There's a couple of different things in there. One is just the general patch, patching cracks, going and do repair patchwork over the worn spots. And you can see the price there, and then the renovation of the track is, is the big one. But we, we can do the patchwork, hopefully this summer can get us by for two to three years, while we kind of debate what we're going to do with that, that track and whatnot. One of the safety items that I'd like to see done is the concrete, to put in a concrete walkway between Cottonwood Bus Lane and, and general parking lot. We, it's a grass area now, it's been a grass area, but there's really no place for students to walk except in the parking lot. So when they're crossing or whatever, it'd be nice to have that center walkway like we have done at White Hollow. One of the things that's on the past five-year plan is the settling of Cottonwood, the south end of Cottonwood. We did have architects look at that, and they just came back and said, yes, the building settled. Our concrete sidewalks on the perimeter of the building have set towards the building, so any water we get feeds into the foundation and causes us more problems. That's an expensive repair also. One of the big ones up is the Mountain View parking lot expansion. If you ever go out there, you can see why, you know, we've added, well, we'll add the second portable, so we're adding students, but parking is very limited. And then one that's been on the list for quite a while is the Cannon Bus Lane to, to provide them a better bus lane. This last one, the gym floors, this is. I guess it's more of a want, but it's, when we redid the freshman campus, we have the, the main court, it still has all the old markings on it. It doesn't line up with the basketball hoops. We need to stand that, re-market and bring it down. Just a little follow-up on the two elementaries. We have several issues that we're watching and monitoring. One of them is to add or not to add the cellular repeater. A lot of places in that building is cellular dead. So if we did have an emergency, it would be difficult to possibly get cell reception. That's a big ticket item. We're watching, we're working with the contractor. I gotta say, Chevernell's been very good to work with. They're right on top of things, and, and they have done a great job. So these issues, I'm sure, will all be taken care of. The one I want to point out is the landscaping. We did the same thing when we built the high school. We put in all this new landscaping, but we didn't add funding power to take care of it. Landscaping in those two buildings will keep people busy for a while. Just, I know questions come up about fertilizer program. We have a program that we're, we're spraying, and it's, we're fertilizing the entire district. Three times a year, well, twice a year for the entire district, but all athletic fields are getting fertilized three times a year. Our spray pro, spray program, just by state law, we can only spray twice a year, so we get our spring application and a fall application and on that. But like everything else, that program is going way up in cost, so just to keep the lawn weed-free and, and green is very expensive. Along with that, we, we aerate the athletic fields three times a year. We use top dressing whenever possible. And then one, one item we did three years ago was sand, and we put about an inch of sand on the, on the stadium football field, trying to work that into the clay. I just, I, we got a total of about one inch of sand over two applications, and it was ten thousand dollars. So with budgets the way they are right now, it's, it's hard to justify ten thousand dollars on sand. If that's, we want to go, we can, we can keep doing that. And then our building envelopes, we've done a, I think we've done a good job in the district far as providing security access or access to people. But we just have to remind people that we need to follow that. As we read, as we look at the I C, we'll, we'll get that one. That's the last school that does not have the, the control that the other schools have. So I think we've done a pretty good job on that. And then on the back page, you'll see the five-year plan that started way back in, in twenty seventeen. We're about done with the plan, but we're not done with the work, so that'll continue on and, and we'll keep going. There's a summary there of just the basic things that are left until they're all pretty high-dollar items. Any questions?
On the, the five-year plan, some things are yellow and some are white.
The yellow ones are just to show what we've done, so we can show progress. We are chipping away at it slowly, but we've got some items there that need to continue.
So the yellow has been completed?
Yellow's complete, yes.
Great, thank you.
So, so we're in, in year twenty twenty-two there in the last column, and, and so we've done pretty well, spent a lot of money to do that. And, and so we've got a little ways to go. We're making progress.
Tim, are there any? Are you experiencing any excessive delays, for example, if, if you need to repair roof, roofing materials, stuff that we have to take into account before the fall season comes around?
Yeah, we're experiencing delays in just about everything. Some are less, but anytime we look at something like even a door, to replace the door, we're looking at six to eight weeks. Three times to get that door, if, if we're lucky. Some of our HVAC parts are coming in quicker than expected, but they're two to six-week delay. And so that is impacting as far as if there's a HVAC problem, that, that room or that school is a trick for a little bit.
Tim, I have a couple of questions. I, I, help orient me a little bit on the Cottonwood Center parking lot sidewalk. The buses, the buses come in the front or the west, the west portion of the school now, right?
Yeah, well, we call that, it's the drop-off lane, the front drop-off lane that comes around in front of the school by the flagpole, by the plaza. That's what I'm calling the bus drop, drop-off area.
In the front of, okay, so, so describe to me, I, I was not, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to visualize this in my head.
If you go out the front door of the, of Cottonwood?
Yes.
You come to the plaza, the concrete plaza, and want going to the south, and then you cross the crosswalk?
Yeah.
And there's a concrete pad right there?
Okay.
But if you go left, it's all grass. So there's a crosswalk that goes across the parking lot. And once they get to that parking lot, they have to turn and walk behind cars, and they have to walk in the grass. And so when it's snowy, muddy, or, or wet, it, it's.
Okay.
It's a mess. So by taking that out and just put a concrete sidewalk in there, it would provide walking access to those.
Gotcha. I was just trying to orient myself where you were talking. I was not clear about that. On the follow-up to the new buildings and, and you've identified some issues. School board is being asked tonight to accept the final report, commissioning report on the school. These are, these are, some of these are, well, would seem like some of these are punch list items?
They are, but they're, they're major ones that, that we're just kind of tracking and following. Kyle is the new guy for Chevern, Chevernell now, and he's been on board from, you know, we've been on, he's been on board, and he's in communication every day.
Right.
And I have, I have no worries that they're going to get corrected, but I just want to make sure that we're watching them and to make sure they get corrected.
Right, but as far as, so like item A on the, on the cellular repeater system, that would be a piece of equipment that the, that the district, that would be equipment that the district would have to fund, right?
Yes, well.
Or through the bond proceeds.
If they don't, if they don't get things corrected. And, and so I learned a lot with the high school. We had major issues. And part of the issues there was documentation, be able to prove our points, and so I think we've done a lot better. One, working with Chevernell and documenting through our systems to have that documented as warranty item, and Kyle's working on all of them.
Right.
Really well.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, this is probably more for Joe in the next meeting for the commissioning report. When I hear these sorts of things, when I hear these sorts of things, and then I hear that we're going to be accepting the final report on these schools. Again, I've read these things real literally. It makes me uncomfortable while we have these kind of issues outstanding. And I don't mean to catch anybody off guard, but I'm just telling you where I'm at, at six fifteen or six twenty-five today, tonight. Right. Okay, okay.
Yeah, and, and so like HVAC, I mean, even when the turnover is done, we still have factory warranty on, on stuff.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
And I'm.
Good with that.
I can support Chevernell and, and finalize and do well.
Yeah, Tim, and, and I'm, again, I'd, I'd have, I'm very pleased, very pleased of, of how this is going. I'm, I'm, you, you mentioned something of, I learned a lot from the high school. I think that the district learned a lot from the building of the high school. We have minimized our transgressions in these projects. From the high school to our, to our betterment for these projects, and so there's a lot of good things that have occurred. So my, my reservation and my hesitation, if you will, is, 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 you know, how do we keep going down that track? So I appreciate, I, I, and trust, Tim, I, I, you know, again, you're, you're boots on the ground with these guys every single day, so your opinion. Their responsiveness, their diligence matters to me, and so I appreciate that. My final question is item three, capital projects. Again, probably more for Joe than for Tim, but you know, my, my, my quick math trying to add up all this stuff is, is that this is in excess of $15 million worth of things that need to happen. My question is, is how are we going to, what's our plan to address these and what's our plan to pay for these? When, you know, I know that, okay, to comply with, there might be, there might be some grants that are available to the district to cover some of that, but that $8 million HVAC bill, but you know, you, you take that away and, 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 you know, you're left with, you know, eight to $10 million worth of additional, additional funding, plus when I look at page one, you know, you've addressed some other needs that are underfunded already. So how do we pay for all this stuff? And, and that's probably more of a question, that's, I mean, it's great to identify these things, but what are we going to do?
Well, from, from my point of view, it's, we need to make sure that everybody's on the same page, looking down, down the same road and that we prioritize and some of this stuff we limp along with, but we start deciding what we're going to do. And I think we've done that. I've met with Peter and Joe several times and they've given me good direction on where we need to go with some of these capital improvements. And so we will just start kind of,
Sure.
Start working through them, just like the five-year plan. And probably develop another five-year plan and, and you know, it'll be over several years. Obviously, we can't do this stuff today.
Sure.
So it's a process and we just need to aware of them and look at them.
Thanks.
Tim, thank you. It's an excellent report, by the way. I really appreciate how well you've laid all these items out. And like Mr. Thorne, I'm also kind of surprised by the price tag. I guess there's sticker shock with everything nowadays. But my question really is, I appreciate that these are, you say they're listed in priority order. And so I take that in terms of relevance, relevant importance to what should be done, not necessarily based on price. Is that correct? Thank you.
One, this may be more of a, you know, would it be a reasonable assumption, Joe, that this plan is going to be made available to the school board at any point in time? Well, I mean, well, I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, as we kind of alluded. Yes.
Just for full transparency, Tim said, he, he met with Joe and myself. We looked at, and we did walkthroughs of the campuses and we were really looking for safety items. So that's, and then we asked Tim to go ahead and start getting some quotes for, for some of the safety items that we were looking at, such as the concrete trip hazards and then the track and tennis courts to see if there were, you know, actual things that need to be addressed immediately. Safety. And so appreciate Tim's follow-through and gave those quotes, boys.
No, I'm thankful. I'm, I'm very thankful. I, I, I think that, and I, I believe I mentioned this about this time last year is, and regardless of how it went down, who was involved, what went down, there were resources and time spent on developing a long-range facilities plan. And, and, and part of that plan, I distinctly remember called for us to tackle deferred maintenance and some of those items are addressed here and some of them are not. And I'm, I'm concerned that again, when we talk about being on the same page, I, I don't, and I'm not here, I just, I don't want it to sound critical. I just don't know that we are on the same page. I don't, I, I, I just don't know how, how that on the one hand plays into this or does it play into this at all? I just, I just don't know. And so I guess that's just going to be continued deliberation, but we gotta, we gotta address these needs, if they're, if they are needs that we need to take care of. I'm not going to argue that point because we had the same discussion last year, Tim. I asked you the same question and you made yourself clear. But I guess I'm just going to keep asking that question because we, a lot of time, effort and resources, regardless of you were included or invited to include, or you know, I don't know how that went down. But it's been out there for a while and there's a disconnect and, and, and soon we're going to have, we're going to have some additional needs to replace some buildings that, again, this is not your problem. I'm just saying this out loud. That part of the building of, I mean, this is not going to be an uncommon thing that I'm going to say, coming forward, other decisions that we have to make. But when we build Apple Valley and Summit View, what we promised was, is not your promise, Tim. This is, you know, this was the promise. Promise was, Apple Valley and Summit View were the start of long-range facilities plan. We commissioned that long-range facilities plan. We did that, did that work. Spent, we hired consultants to do that. Again, I'm not going to argue that point, but to me, this just feels like we're disorganized. That's, that's, that's how I feel. That's not a criticism of you, Tim. It just, it's sort of a, it's, it's, it's just my personal comment about this whole situation. So I hope it, I, I just, I don't know. I just hope it gets better.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Anybody else? Comments?
I've got one. Sorry for having to come in late, but old aging clubiness got me and took a fall and cracked a bit. I just got out of emergency in the x-ray room and all that good stuff. So if I grimace a little bit or something, it's not what's being said. It's because I've got a little jab in the side going here. One thing I have heard since I got back or since I got here and managed to arrive is I was under the assumption that Mr. was on the facilities committee long-term and have been from the get-go. It's really disappointing to me personally to hear that he's not. Because he does have, like you put it a minute ago, you know, boots on the ground with these guys who are doing all the work for a lot of time. He knows what might or should be top priority and be put down the road a while. And I think his knowledge, experience and the information he has would be very, very beneficial to those folks that are on the committee at this point. And I don't know about the rest of the board and what, what their assumption is, but I myself thought he was part of that committee from the get-go. And would like to see something, you know, you've mentioned disorganized and I could understand that being an ad.
Well, I would say of the process, not necessarily of the committee. But anyway.
Right, and Mike, that was about a year and a half ago, under the previous administration that we were talking about. So at this point, we are definitely meeting with Tim on a regular basis. Yeah, so we're back on track.
I do have one question. Are any of the, especially the number three, the capital projects, are any of these at all, by any stretch of the imagination, underway or any fashion or form, or they all completely from scratch and this is the price for starting completely anew? Yeah, part of my question, yes, I should say, part of my question, why I ask that is because as we all know, as prices go up, you know, something that might have cost us $10,000 and it's a small project that maybe it's something that could be done in the short term. If we wait a year, two years, that price instead of $10,000 is now $25,000. I would like to see us try to avoid that as much as possible, if we could just kind of pinpoint some of those smaller ones, especially things that might already be underway. So it's just a comment more than looking for a response, but, but thanks for identifying. Anybody else?
Just a discussion here? Real quick comment, tennis courts, I mean, when we put them in, we talked about, we had a long-range planning committee meeting about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and Tim was there, just to point out. And, but tennis courts, when they were put in, the person who put them in said, maintain them for a certain amount of time, and that didn't happen, correct? But we, it's, it's not like we built something and then forget it. We had plans, like with the tennis court to maintain them, but it really, they, the person who was going to do that didn't do a great job. Can I say that? Is that accurate to say? And so we, we so it's not like we haven't tried. I mean, we have had agreements with people and they haven't followed through. I think when you talk about the high school experience, yes, I mean, we've learned a lot from the high school. But part of the deal is you, where are you going to spend your money? We have X number of dollars. And oh, we've had this list for a long time. When I was working for the district, we had, Tim had the same list. And I remember many times going into meetings and talking about, okay, here we got this, this, this and this. And which ones are we going to spend our money on? We have X number of dollars. And I think we did probably the best, I mean, West Valley is not a free-spending school district at all. I mean, we're very tight, watch our money school district. And I think we've done a pretty good job over the years, looking at what we have. And, but we've said this before that we need to catch up. We put a million dollars in a year, the last two, three years to do this each year and maybe a million dollars is not enough, but we did a million dollars in just to maintain or to catch up. And so it's not like we're sitting here watching things deteriorate. I think we've really tried. But you have, you know, other just too that we've had to address. And, but the long-range planning committee has met with Tim and it is a major job and there are lots of things that have been done. If you look at this, there's more yellows where things done than not done. And I kind of feel like we're kind of being jumped on for not getting everything finished, but it's not like we haven't tried. And I think we're doing the best we can on a limited budget. And Tim has done an amazing job over the years on a limited budget. And as an old principal, I mean, he heard me too, that why can't we get this done? Why can't we get that done? You know, it's not like, it's just us talking to him. It's everybody else talking to him too. He's done an amazing job over the years for us and I'm thankful that we had him. So, but maybe we need to put more than a million dollars a year into, into those projects so we can catch up. Maybe that's what we need to talk about this, but we need to figure out where that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews would like to speak. So we're going to go ahead and let you make a comment. Then we're going to move on after that because we're running out of time. Thank you for that clarification. We're going to go ahead and move on to the communications presentation. So that's.
All right, so Amy Forrest, I believe she has a PowerPoint, so I think the board will need to join the audience. And I'll take the wireless mic here so that if there's any comments from the board, we can have everyone be able to hear that.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending. My name is Amy Forrest, as they mentioned. I am the new director of communications here. I am the new director of communications here at West Valley School District. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the department, what we have going on, what we've accomplished and what some of the plans are for the future. So a little introduction, I had received at Central Washington University with an emphasis actually from with communications emphasis on speech. A master's in management and social sustainability management from Seattle Pacific University. My professional career, I have almost 30 years of communication, corporate communication, marketing and business development. And for my personal life, I have a wonderful family that I love very much. I have three older sisters. And even though they are chronologically older, I like to tease them and say, I, I, I am chronologically the youngest, but I tease them and say, I actually look younger. But that's just a joke. I love community, past and present, and then travel, love to travel. As you can see from some of the pictures I posted there, not only have I traveled the great United States overseas as well. I know we're kind of pressed for times. Go quickly here. I started this position November 1st. And on November 3rd, I was tasked to run a thought exchange survey with our admin team. Our admin team gathered and the thought exchange is actually a literal term. It's an exchange of thoughts and ideas. And we were asked, we asked Peter and I wanted to get together and decide what are the priorities of the communication department? What direction should we head? What focus? So three priorities came out of that admin thought exchange and it was pass the levy, community engagement and update the website. So those were the three top priorities, main goals of the communication department. So let me tell you, when I hit the ground running, I hit the ground running. So where are we at? How far have we come? But we passed the levy. Yay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, community. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, district. It was a lot of work, a lot of time and a lot of effort, and we can't thank you enough because ultimately at the end of the day, it's an investment in this great district, in this great community. There's me at the county courthouse with my ballot in hand. So what were our efforts? Met with the field group as a marketing company who designed our website within the first two weeks of being in my particular position, met with the West Valley Citizens Brothers School shortly after that on the 18th at Starbucks at seven in the morning to get their take and their input. They're a great resource as to what the community has going on in terms of the pulse. Promotional materials, everything was distributed, printed. Now, mind you, all of this has to be thoroughly read through for any print, printing typos or any type of language that we may not want to project. We scheduled social media promotion around the levy. We had local media. Yakima Herald Republic, we had K I T, Dr. Finch and Mr. Strong had an interview at K I T, which was outstanding. If you haven't listened to it, it's on our website. And then we had K N D O come out, talk about the STEM fair and thankfully it was right around the time of levy. So we were kind of really drumming up quite a bit. We also had a podcast and if you haven't listened to that yet, it is outstanding. It is nationally syndicated on Spotify and Apple, just for your information, and it talked about the arts and how important some of these extracurricular activities, specifically the arts play for these students. We had Zoom levy nights and we also tried to get more community outreach by scheduling levy information night at Harmon Center. So we talked about that first priority, which was the levy, talked about our efforts towards the levy and we passed levy, which is great. Next second order of business is community engagement. So community engagement is very important to our district. It's very important to me. It's very important to Dr. Finch. It's very important to our community leaders. But what tools do we have for community engagement? What, what can we utilize? So we have our website. We have our social media platforms. And then we have our traditional and our conventional media, the news, the television stations and then print art. So let's look at the website. I just thought this was interesting. I'm too new to measure anything year over year. So I just looked at the data parameters of November 1 to April 1. And you'll see the peaks and troughs. All of the troughs are weekends. We don't have anybody coming on the website on the weekends. There's very little activity on the weekends. See a couple of like the very first peak in, in January there. Interestingly enough, that was right around the timeframe of the school closure in terms of inclement weather. So everybody was going on the website during that time. So we're not going to go over every single peak and trough, but this is just something that I look at to kind of measure. What is the activity of the user? What, what are the timeframes? What are the dates? What are we doing so we can try to identify patterns? And if we identify patterns, we can continue to market towards those patterns. So another platform that we have is our social media. This isn't the measure, but it's a measure to see how we're doing. Again, timeframe from the time I've been here, November 1 to April 1, you'll see that tremendous spike. That tremendous spike was when we introduced the story of Ram's landing. Everyone on social media in terms of Facebook loved it. I think there was something like 200 likes and our average is about 40 to 50 likes. So everybody loved that story about Ram's landing because they hadn't heard about it quite yet. I don't think it was, wasn't as out there. Yes.
And we have about three more minutes because we'll lose some time for questions.
Okay, no problem. So let's go to the, instead of going through peace and valleys, we're up almost 500% on our reach with Facebook, 165% on our Instagram. Page visits were up 186% on Facebook. We're up 139% on Instagram. The most important is actually page likes and new followers. So these are new followers. So in this timeframe, new, new followership on our social media accounts is up 177% and up about 60% on our Instagram accounts. So again, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the end all be all. It's just some kind of thing that we can measure. What have we accomplished in communication? We accomplished the audio visual. Audio's great. Visual's great. You can always look at the recordings on our website of every board meeting. And then anything that goes through my desk, I watch, listen to. If there's a podcast, I sit and listen. If there's a video, I listen. So we, I always want to make sure there's clear and concise, transparent messaging. Webpages, we added RAM to Wildcat. Jed Waters was fundamental in getting that done because he knows all of the courses and all of the the curriculum around what we need to do for RAM to Wildcat. But we, we, the innovation center was a webpage, RAM to Wildcat, RAM landing. You can just look at all of the webpages that we've put up in just a short period of time. Media coverage, Candy O's been out here four times. I just got off the phone with Lindsay prior to coming here and K D O is going to be there tomorrow for the Rams on the red carpet takeover as well. We've also got Yakima Herald Republic. It's really important to understand that it's a coveted relationship to have with the media when they call for ideas and stories. Hey, what's West Valley got going on? I've got a story on Friday I've got to do. Well, hey, come out and visit our plane learner. Come out and visit Rams landing, come out. So it's really nice to have that kind of relationship and it's important to build those kinds of relationships. I think that needs to be said. And then district coverage, coverage for all of the schools. We built an internal calendar with all the elementary schools. So they're being on a rotating basis. They're being covered every single week. Because we get so excited, there's so much activity at the high school mid-level happening that I think the elementary schools need to be covered as well. Trying to hurry through this. I know we're pressed for time. Timeline, summer, website cleanup. I'd like to streamline the forums and pages and resources. I think there's quite a bit. I, I need to streamline that. I need to get with Clayton Wykoff and get our safety page up. Exciting news about the homepage of our website. We're going to institute a carousel of picture. It's just one picture being changed out every two weeks. I've deployed, we need a specific pixelated quality picture. So I've deployed our field group to each individual school. We've already had White Hollow, Mountain View. They're going to a tannum on Wednesday. And they've already been to the high school. So we've only got a few more left. Community engagement for the fall. We'd like to have a kickoff party of some sort. We will let you know soon to follow. I'd like to put out a few more surveys and then more promotional coverage. And then for the winter daily operations, I hope by the winter time, this department is running like a clock. I mean, just, just exactly how I want it to do, but it's do to be, excuse me, but I'm still building that. I'm still new. And I'm still learning a lot in terms of the public sector as well, because for so many years I was in the private sector. Very different, yet parallel. So let's make this light. I've been overseas and just like in New York or LA, they have street vendors who have hot dogs and pretzels and things like that. Well, when I was in Beijing, touring the Nike distribution plant. These were what the street vendors had on the street. They had scorpions. They had the larva kebab. And then they had the smaller, smaller scorpions. I want to know by show of hands, who thinks that I ate the scorpion? Show of hands. Jill, you think I ate the scorpion? Do you all think I'm brave? I am not that brave. I, I, I actually had the best dumpling I've ever had in my entire life. So thank you very much, everybody. I'm always accessible. Thank you for your support. Couldn't appreciate you more. Have a good night.
All right. A little time here for question and answer with the board. So any questions or comments from the board? All right. Run the mic over here.
A loaded question. I think in 2022, this is a wonderful presentation and the energy that you have brought to our district is much appreciated. One of the things that occurred to me as I was reviewing the presentation prior to the meeting and then in hearing you is, is that if you're connected electronically, this is readily available to you. I think that we live in an interesting time in 2022 where on the one hand you have parents that are for the most part, probably, especially in our district, probably connected electronically. And then, and then we have people like my parents who are not very connected, who are patrons of the district and community members. So my question, and that is just an observation. So my question is, is, is all of our, all of those, you know, our parents, you know, we want to make sure that information is readily available to them. But there's kind of two problems. One is, is information overload and how do we connect with? How do we minimize or maximize the message to our parents to make sure that they're getting access? And then on the flip side, to our people that are not connected electronically, how do we make sure? What are your thoughts on how do we ensure that they're connected to us, the district?
Yeah, us. Well, that's interesting, Michael. And I've, I've actually analyzed it in my head. I mean, how are we going to reach those patients, those, those, those people? Because my, my mom is the perfect example of who you're speaking of. She, she doesn't go on Facebook. She's not on social media. She does indeed read the paper, however, so we do have that form of communication and we are so grateful to have our unleashed students always keeping us in the paper. Because that really does hit some of those community members, as you mentioned, that aren't, that, that just don't have kids who's going to the school. But they care a lot about what happens to the school. I mean, that's, that, that affects our property. Our biggest investment is our children. Our second is our home retirement, things like that. So we're trying, you know, we're trying, thinking of new ideas and new ways. As I said, we'd like to do kind of a community kickoff and really try to engage, as you said, that people like my mom. I mean, she's a taxpayer and she, she really likes the district. But we also communicate through, you know, the newsletters and the paper and anytime we can get the K N D O to come out, like I said, or K I M A, I jump at it. Because that's pretty much our only option.
All right. I think we're just about out of time. We have the flyer that we mail home every other month and that's an increase in the number of times that we mail that home this year compared to the past. So I appreciate Amy's work on that. And then we do work with the field group to help with the layout on that. All right. So thank you, Amy. And we need to move to the regular board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're running a little bit behind schedule here. We're going to take a quick, let's say four minute break here, start at 7:05 and we'll be right back. Allegiance, we've already done. Dr. Finch, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, communications?
All right, we'll start first with response to public comment. So during the public comment section of the school board meeting on April 26th, there were public comments regarding gender inclusive schools. This is the same information that we posted on the website, trying to be fully transparent with our work in this area. For many years, the West Side School District has followed Washington State laws for anti-discrimination, related identity and the use of public restrooms. For full transparency with our parents, students and community, the district is developing policy and procedures that will be aligned with Washington State laws related to anti-discrimination. The policy and procedures will be fully transparent and will assist the district to communicate our compliance with these Washington State laws. Timeline for the development of the policy and procedures is that the district drafted a draft policy and procedures and posted that to the district website last week on April 20th. We also, for this night's board meeting, we made copies of that so that if you were not able to see the draft on the website, we made copies and they're here this evening. This is work that after the presentation by the district lawyer at the April 12th meeting, myself and the lawyer went through and revised the FOASDA model and tried to make it very clear that we were complying with the Washington State law. School district will have discussion for first reading at their meeting on Tuesday, May 10th. So just inform you that this evening, there will not be discussion about the draft of the policy that we're going to have first reading on Tuesday, May 10th. And at that meeting on Tuesday, May 10th, the district lawyer will be in attendance to provide, you know, question and answer session with the school board. The school board will accept comments and feedback between the first reading and second reading. And comments can be submitted via the email address, which is also on the website, but it's just for your information, wbstdcommunications, with the S, at wbstd208.org. So between that time of Tuesday, May 10th, accept comments and feedback. And then the school board will have question for second reading. And the timeline is to adopt the policy and procedures on Tuesday, June 14th of 2022. The question and answer session with the district lawyer from the April 12th school board meeting is available on the district website. And so there's a YouTube address there. It's just posted to the district website and you can access it via the district website. And the second response to public comment was regarding comments that were, had a question about the sexual health standards regarding gender identity. So I did some research on this and we did receive information from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction, that's OSPI. The Washington State Standards for Health include standards for sexual health education. These standards include a section on self-identity, which does include guidance for instruction about gender identity and gender expression. In the effort to address harassment, intimidation at the high school, the high school staff designed a lesson for Ram Strong Advisory to coincide with the holiday, holiday for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in January. This lesson included information about gender identity and gender expression. A community member expressed concern that parents would not provide information prior to this lesson. OSPI has informed the district that for a short lesson on this topic, the district is not required to inform parents. Nevertheless, it is the intention of the district to ensure that parents are informed about their students' education. And as a result, the district superintendent has directed principles that parents should be informed prior to instruction for any lessons regarding the sexual health standards, even a short lesson such as the one at the high school that was focused on harassment, intimidation and bullying. So I do appreciate the public comments and this concludes the response to public comments.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Finch. Well, we'll go B by B in communications and that is attendance boundaries.
All right. So this evening, we actually have our Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, Joe Conley, has quite a bit on the agenda. So two of the items here coming up on communications will be Joe Conley providing some communications to the board. Item B is attendance boundaries and then he'll follow up on item C, which is the Summit View Elementary Playground Request. So thank you, Joe, here this evening.
Out there on 64th and Washington, and I think you guys are all aware of. It's, it looks like there's going to be about 80-plus homes that are currently part of that. Right now, that little spot is part of the Summit View Boundary. And due to capacity and to be a little, be proactive, this new development, we would like to move that to a tandem boundary to kind of pull some kids down there. We have verified this with transportation on the ability to provide service and we are good to go there. So Jamie's full support of this. I want to hand out is that there is no impact to current families or anybody from there. It's literally just a new development that we're trying to pull from some of you just due to the capacity. As far as a follow-up, we are going to continue to assess the development and its true impact to enrollment. There's a lot of little metrics that we need to follow or that we need to assess. And we'll, we're going to work with transportation about any future boundary adjustments, bring it to the board. And we'll hopefully tie that little square that you see in the board memo into the atanum area map. So it looks a little bit more cleaner because right now it looks like a little yellow spot in a purple block area. So. Okay.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Will you contact the developer and, and so that parents who are already starting to sell the houses, the parents are aware that the kids go to a tandem and not some of you?
Yes, sir. I could definitely do that. Yep. We can put, we're going to put out some communication. I just wanted to make sure you guys were fully aware.
Yeah.
I'll work with Amy on that.
Okay.
And I think I'm up again.
Yep, go ahead.
All right. This memo is in reference to a request to place an additional playground structure at some of you elementary due to student numbers. There's a little background in there. Eva came to me and then obviously I think we had initially some of you set up to about 340, 400 students there. But now it's, I mean, obviously this school year it's been around 500. There's less space, fewer structures there, and they lost some equipments due to some insurance liability and some pieces of repurposed equipment could not be, could not be repurposed. So it caused them to have a little bit less equipment. There's not enough equipment that currently exists for all students to participate and play on, just to do the total of student numbers. We worked with the Bond Oversight Committee. They were very grateful and they were appreciative of the memo and conversations that we had. We obtained three quotes. The one that was accepted, working with Eva, was $81,000. The Bond Oversight reviewed these quotes and this memo and is in full support of this addition. And the plan is to hopefully start in the summer for installation on this. So just some informational there.
So, any questions?
Well, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Elementary principal, would it be nice to, this be kind of like what we do in the future? The district puts in playground equipment. In the past, it was almost up to the parent group to fundraise and get the money and put in playground equipment. And it was not equitable between elementary schools. And in the future, can we look as a district at, that's just part of our obligation is to support all six or whatever number of elementary schools we have in playground equipment so that we don't rely upon.
Most definitely.
Fundraising.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
All right, perfect.
Thank you, Joe. We'll see you later in the meeting.
I may, I just wanted to circle back to an item, Dr. Finch, on, on response to public comment. Dr. Finch, I just wanted to say thank you for forwarding the school board. The messages that, that the district's email has received, the district communications email on, on, on the gender inclusivity issue and, and appreciate you getting that to us in addition to the emails that, I mean, you haven't forwarded those to us, but in addition to the emails that we received are our personal emails through the school district and at schoolboard@wbstd.org. So those, those messages are getting to us. And I think the entire board appreciates that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item six on the agenda, program presentation, special education. I'm sorry, Director Lucas Jager.
All right, looks like he has a whole team with him. So we also have Brennan as our coordinator for special services. And Susan Almison is our coordinator for autism services. And then Lucas Jager is, Lucas Jager is our director for student and family support, which includes special education. We'll be focusing specifically on special education this evening. Luke, do you have a PowerPoint or do we?
There should be a presentation up there.
Yeah, okay. So with the presentation PowerPoint, the board needs to go to the audience. And I will take the wireless mic again in case we have any questions for you. Just give us a second to get to the audience.
Are you standing there, Mike?
All right. So as Dr. Finch said, I'm Lucas Jager. I'm the director of student family support for our district, which includes special education. Kevin Brennan is a special education coordinator. He's focusing on instruction, what's happening in the class. And Susan is a special education coordinator. Title says autism, but she's really working on our students with autism and our students with severe disabilities as well. So my first slide here, school board and everybody else, just the number of kids we have on individual education plans in the district. We took the, I believe it's the November count and the April count. So every month we're required to send to OSBI how many students we have on IEPs. So you can get an idea of where we're at. There's a trend line in the middle. So we are slowly increasing every year. I did not look at it with our overall population increase of our students, but I'm pretty, pretty similar. Our next slide is just a breakdown of the type of IEPs we have and also by grade level. So our resource students, those are our students who are receiving services mostly in reading, writing or math in a traditional pullout where they're getting pulled out for anywhere from a half hour to an hour and a half a day, depending on the services they need. Or they're getting some services pushed in in the general education classroom at some of our schools. The next line there you'll see is DLC. Those are more traditionally referred to as self-contained students, where they're in one classroom for the majority or all of their day. They have some more moderate to severe needs that are being met in those classrooms. And then lastly, our students who are on speech IEPs. We do have a couple of students who are on an OT-only IEP. Many of them get services. Same with PT. We have a handful of students that receive some physical therapy, but most of our students are for categories of services. Our next slide here is a percentage of students who have met grade level standards on the S-Back. And I'm going to come back to this in a bit and why we're showing these. But you can see there's a gap between our students without IEPs and our students with IEPs and whether they're meeting the reading, ELA, the math and the science state standards. Going on to the next one, you can see the trend over the last five years, that gap is not really getting closed. The next slide is percent of students who graduated over the last, in four years. Students with IEPs, students without IEPs and all students. Again, we have a gap here. You also have an increase of students with IEPs who are dropping out each year. Going on to the next slide. Sorry if I'm going too fast here. We got a lot of coverage today. This actually is, the slide is titled wrong. This is our graduation rate trend. And you'll see, we're not making a lot of progress on closing that gap between students who have IEPs and those who don't, who are graduating on time within four years. Next slide, want to share some of our WACs, Washington Administrative Code, around special education. And just some key things that are in here. So there's a thing called Continuum of Services, which Kevin is going to be deeper in just a minute. Some key phrases out of here, though. Each school district shall ensure that a continuum of alternative placement is available to meet the special education and related services needs of students. The related services is usually a speech or an OT, PT, such as instruction in general education classes and special education classes, and make provision for supplementary services. So that's in addition to services, not in replacement of, as such as resource room or itinerary instruction to be provided in conjunction with general education classroom placement. And our next slide talks about least restrictive and something that we look at. It's our job to make sure that our students are receiving the least restrictive environment. And that means to the extent, to the maximum extent appropriate in the general education environment with students who are non-disabled. And it talks about special classes, separate schooling or other removal of students eligible for special education from the general education environment occurs only if the nature or severity of the disability is such that education and general education classes with the use of supplementary aids and services cannot be achieved satisfactory. And then placement talks about least restrictive environment requires, requirements contained in the previous WAC. A student shall not be removed from education in an age-appropriate general education classroom solely because of the need for modifications in the general education classroom or education curriculum. We're talking about if a student qualifies for an IEP and they have, either they need different modifications, we can't just remove them and put them into a special education setting. Traditionally in the state of Washington, that is what happens. When you qualify IP, you pretty much right away remove the classroom and put into a special education setting. IEP purpose, general education curriculum, the same curriculum as for non-disabled students to enable the student to be involved with, I'm sorry, to be involved in and make progress in the general education curriculum, make progress in the general education curriculum. Going to the next slide here. Curriculum is mentioned 21 times in our WACs, 11 times the general education curriculum, five is curriculum, twice is core curriculum, once is general education core curriculum and one time is general curriculum. So no matter how many times they can't figure out, just use one term for curriculum, never once do they say special education curriculum or replacement curriculum. There's only one curriculum in, in Washington. So I sped through all of that to get to this slide here. Our scores, we have some gaps. We got some gains we need to make. Our scores are not where we want them to be. Situation rates are not where they want them to be, where we want them to be. We've done a lot of research. We looked at a lot of data. We looked at our S-Back data. We looked at our graduation rates, kindergarten readiness, post-school success, qualitative surveys. We've done a lot of research on this. We also spent a lot of time looking at those WACs, talking with other people around the state on how they're interpreted and what they mean. We also spent a lot of time on the families, some of them who are here today, that have really shaped how we view special education, what's important to our families, what's important to our students, and really challenged us to think about the traditional model of special education and that it's not right. Then also talking with our staff and problem solving and realizing that the things that we're doing are not meeting the needs of our students the way we want them to. And so all of that, when we bring that all together, we do the research, the things that keep coming up time and time again are inclusion and universal design for learning as a solution to those problems. So moving on from here, Kevin is going to further talk about continuum of services.
Hi, I'm Kevin Brennan. I'm a special education instructional coordinator. And so I'm going to talk about continuum of services. And I apologize as I move away from the mic a little bit. When we talk about continuum of services, we're talking about where we can, where our students fall in, in a line in, in regards to where they're receiving their services. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of talk about a traditional model and then what we're currently doing and or looking to improve upon. A traditional model in the elementary schools is that either, if your students place on an IEP, they're either in the DLC classroom, in the resource room or in the general, general education classroom. And so if we go to the next slide, what we seek to do is increase the number of options there. So we're meeting the needs of the students, not that we're just fitting the student into whatever is available for them. And so instead, what we, we seek to do is move from maybe a student is needing more of a restricted environment. So we do have a DLC placement. restricted environment. So we do have a DLC placement for them. Or we move them down the continuum to DLC with some resource classes. And so we have that available for them as well. Or we're just pulling them out of the general education classroom to get some some services. And by the way, this is at the elementary school level. Or we can look to pull, pull students out and put them into a more inclusive environment as well. And so again, meeting their needs. We are seeking to do a lot more co-teaching where we are putting special education teachers in the classroom with the general education teacher to allow for those students to remain in the general education classroom, which we know is the best place for them. And then finally, an inclusive environment where the special education teacher is just consulting with the general education teacher. And again, trying to get that student to the place that best fits them. At the middle level, if you go to the next slide. The traditional model again is a D resource room, general education classroom. But what we seek to do is add more options. And so if we go to the next one. We we add in similar options for those students again to fit their needs best. And so what we're seeking to do right now is find ways to be more creative to to provide more options for us. And so again, adding things like co-teaching, consulting with teachers. You know, providing different options for our students along the way. And then finally, at the high school level. Same thing, traditional self-contained DLC resource room, general education classroom. Our ideal is to add more options. And again, provide what's best for those students, not just trying to find the the best box that's available for them. And so we're really trying to push this because we know that if our students have more access to the general education curriculum, then that's going to improve performance in school and give them more opportunities when they get out of high school, which is our, you know, ultimately our job. And so if we go to the last slide, really, when we were talking about how do we make this happen? We're looking really at at three things. First of all, is a mindset change where we're really thinking about all of our students being all of our students, not these are special education students, these are general education students. These are all of our students. And so how are we going to serve all of our kids at once? Professional development and training. We need to have our, all of our teachers equipped to handle all students with all different types of needs. And so that's where U D L comes in. And if our, if our staff is is more trained, they feel more equipped and we need to make sure that they feel equipped when those students are coming into their, into their classroom because they're going to be their student. And then personnel, quantity and quality. There are times where we need more personnel in order to give more options for our students. We also have to seek out the 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 best and the brightest to make sure that we have the best that are serving our kids, which I feel really confident with who we have right now, but we can always seek out and try and find the best of the best as we move forward as old people like me eventually retire. So.
All right, I'm Susan Almison. Like we said, I'm the other special services coordinator for the district and I primarily work with our students with autism and severe behavior issues. So our students who fall on the more severely impacted side of the continuum. So we do have two program-specific DLC or self-contained classrooms at the elementary level for our severely impacted students. The first one is our behavior support classroom at Autanum. And this is, this program is designed for students who are average or above average in their intelligence. But their behavior is impacting their ability to access the general education curriculum. So we are using a research-based model called the tiers program. That has a, that utilizes a bunch of research-based strategies to help remediate some of their social skills issues, social emotional issues, and then the behavior issues as well. Program is really designed to help remediate those issues and get the students back into the general education setting or whatever their least restricted environment is as quickly as possible. And then our second classroom is our autism or A B A classroom at Cottonwood. This classroom is designed to serve our most severely impacted students. So most of the students in this classroom have minimal or no functional communication. They're non-verbal. A lot of them use picture exchange to communicate or A A C devices or sign language. Many of them are focusing on pre-academic skills, so just building up and up, sitting in the chair and doing pre-academic sort of tasks like matching and sorting and things of that nature. Many of them do have interfering behaviors that we're working on remediating and really focusing on that functional communication piece and really teaching them how to learn so that they can also move out as quickly as possible to a less restrictive environment. And we are, we do have inclusion opportunities for the students in both of these programs. So the behavior classroom, they're on a points and level system. So as they're showing improvements in their behavior, we're pushing them out back into the gen ed setting. And then in the Cottonwood classroom, some of our students who don't get overstimulated out at recess go out to recess with their gen ed peers. We have kids coming into the classrooms with parent permission during recess time to run social skills groups and teaching to play games and take turns with our first grade and fourth grade, since we have K five in the, in the classroom. So making sure all of our students have same-age peers to be interacting with.
Just real quick, I understand we just threw out some educational jargon when we said U D L and universal design for learning. So I just want to explain what that is real quick. In a traditional schooling, a teacher would share information one way, whatever way they feel is the best way. They have one activity for the class to do, and then they assess the learning one way. There's a comic strip and a quote that's attributed to, I think, Albert Einstein. It has different types of animals. And the task is that they would climb up a tree. You know, you can't measure fish by how good of a fish he is by how he climbs up a tree. You have to assess them differently. And so we want to have teachers who are providing information in different ways to our students, having a variety of ways of presenting the information, a variety of ways for students to access and learn that information, interact with it, assess it a variety of different ways as well. So we could truly get an understanding of what our students understand and what they're able to do. And not just if they could jump through the hoop that's been there for five, 10, 20 years. A great analogy for this is if I was going to buy all of you guys over for a dinner party and I, you know, I made enchilada, then some of you guys are vegan, some of you are just straight carnivores and somebody is lactose intolerant, I'm going to be back in my kitchen over and over again, making different things for different people. But if I put everything out in a buffet where just all the different options are out there, you can come in and you can make your salad or you can make your your taco, or you can make just your meat meal, whatever you want to make. And so that's what we're trying to do with our teachers is to get them to give a buffet to our students so that all students can participate fully. Questions?
I have a few. It's my experience in that some of our kids that have been haven't been identified as benefiting from some services. Once they reach the high school level, it's really tough to get them any services. Why is that? And what are we doing to help those kids so that they can be the on-time graduates?
I couldn't hear all of that.
That's right.
Well, I think what we're doing is what we were just talking about up there is is trying to find the place where provide a continuum of services that that can fit those kids as as they move up to that next level. And we're really focused on, especially when they get to high school, that transition piece of finding out what's the next step for them. And the high school does a really good job of trying to find different ways, especially with C T E of of different ways that that kids can go. And then when we talk about just general services overall, as far as special education services, again, going back to provide tenure, not just a one-size-fits-all or three, three sizes fit all, but trying to find different ways and looking at those individual kids and finding the services that they need.
But why is it such a roadblock to get those kids into services once they reach this building?
As getting into service, like getting into special education services. Generally speaking, it, those, those disabilities are going to be identified early on. And so it's, it's a little bit more difficult because there's a
Specific criteria that the students have to meet to qualify. And a lot of that is based on their academic history and being able to rule out other causes for the discrepancy in their, their learning.
And also with the co-teaching classroom where we're bringing the special ed teacher into the classroom or consulting. Did not all those students are on I E Ps, you know, over half of that class, those kids are not on I E Ps. So we're actually providing a supportive extra teacher to another group of students. So some of our schools have students who are struggling but not on I E Ps into those classes as well, so they could also get that additional support. But there is a way that we could help serve those students without being on I E P. And that's one thing just nationally, as people are working on inclusion is why do we have to have these labels? Why does a kid have to meet this label to get this? You know, why are we not just looking at the needs of the kids and providing those needs? We have all these specialists. Traditionally, again, when we go into what we've done in education is we have a silo, special ed funding only goes to special ed students. Title funding only goes to title students. Lap funding only goes to laps. And so what happens, like in our elementary, for example, we have a lap interventionist and we have a special ed interventionist. They're both teaching reading intervention. Why are we not like consolidating that and having one person teach reading intervention to everybody and one person doing math intervention to everybody? And that concept is called grading funding. That's something we're exploring and we're getting better knowledge of. We're actually going to go talk to a couple of schools the next couple of days about how they do that and how we could do that here in our but we're learning about this because there are kids out there who are not being identified for whatever reason. High school is a big one because they talked about. By the time you get there, if you haven't qualified, it is hard to qualify because there are certain qualifications you got to meet. And at the high school level, it's really hard to do that. But we are trying to, not only to serve our students with I U P, but to serve all students. We want all students to be successful. Does that help answer your question?
It does. And I'm still frustrated because we lose those kids. Those kids come to the high school and the system has failed them because for whatever reason, from elementary to middle school, when it's easier to get them identified. They get to the high school level, they throw their hands up and they say, well, I'm done. And, and that's, that's a, that's a, that's a frustration.
Right. And I would say that that's, that's a frustration by E Ps or not, that we have to, we have to figure out why our kids are struggling when they get up to the high school. And and special education isn't just an automatic fix. A lot of times kids are struggling simply because of of Trump and and other issues that are going on. And we have to be able to figure out all of those kids and and why they're struggling and not necessarily. It's not necessarily always a special education issue, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, that it, that we automatically go to, well, they're struggling, they must qualify for special education, where really it's, it's about trying to find where they, what they need and how they, how they need to get it for all kids. So.
Right, I agree. Another question I have is not sure in which order to ask these two questions. Is it, is it an expectation of all the students that do have an I E P that they graduate on time?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's, it is an expectation. We expect all, we are, we're expecting all kids to graduate on time. But as kids are progressing through and the, and their, their needs on their I E P might be different, then we're going to adapt that based off of the individual kid. But I think general statement, general philosophy, when we look at a student, we're, we're pushing for that. That's not necessarily going to happen for all students.
And I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but I think it's only like thirteen percent of students on an I E P have an intellectual disability. There's no reason that our discrepancy should be that wide between the S back test scores for kids with and without an I E P and the high school graduation rates for kids with and without an I E P.
So that leads me to my next question.
Can I expand on that a little bit? So what she just talking about is the, the students are under that thirteen percent. A lot of them have a specific learning disability, that's the average IQ. Or they have a other health impairments like A D H D, A D D, they, and they have emotional behavior disability. So average IQ and historically, again, we would remove them from the general education class and put them in a resource class, but then we assess them on the general education curriculum. So our students have been assessed for graduation purposes and for S back for a curriculum they haven't seen, vocabulary they haven't heard. And so that's where we are struggling with these numbers. And even though we've at the district have been working on this for a few years, I think it's our second grade class right now, they will be the first ones that have had this inclusive opportunities all the way through. So we're not really going to see this, this closing the gap for a while where the kids are actually having the opportunity to get all this information that their peers have had and really be assessed on it. Does that make sense?
Completely. And then, so that leads me to, there's a huge discrepancy in numbers and we were at seventeen percent. Was that what the number was? So are we losing those kids? Are they moving on? Or is there another pathway where they are able to graduate maybe a year? I know that that are able to be in school until they're twenty-one. And so, you know, are those kids being included in those graduation rates? But where are those kids going? How many of those kids are we losing?
Well, we're, I think all of the above. I, we're, we're losing kids because they're dropping out because schools frustrated for them. We're having students go all the way through but not meeting graduation requirements on time. And then we are having kids that are holding on until they're twenty-one years old. And in our world, we'd like to close that gap in all three instances and do the best we can to make sure that kids are staying in school, make sure that they're hitting graduation requirements on time and as many as possible hitting those graduation requirements before twenty-one. And hopefully, you know, again, on time with their classmates. And we feel like the more that they're included with their classmates, exposure to general education curriculum, and then addressing all the other needs that are going on, that we can close that gap.
And we've moved to different graduation pathways in the last several years. I'm sure you guys are working extremely hard to get those kids into those, those different areas so that they have those pathways.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
I think also you could share about the great work that Mr. Johnson's doing, having it, having him both career and technical education certified and special education certified. I think that's been a real great improvement in our program in West Valley.
For future question, you not cover your mouth so I could read your lips. I think you asked about Ryan's program, the transition program at the high school. So yeah, we have a program at the high school for kids that are eighteen to twenty-one. We've had it, I think, for about four or five years now. It's averaging, I think, between ten and fifteen students. And the goal of that program is that they would get job skills at the high school, some training on that, some life skills at the high school, then they go out into the community and actually get to put those skills into use during this day with a pair of pro supporting them, supervising, they come back, they get some feedback, and they'd have multiple opportunities during the year. COVID kind of shut that down for a couple of years. Ryan and I just went around, we have some partnerships. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say them or not, but we got some partnerships going in for next year. Really excited about it. We're going to have kids out every day getting some life skills. So they'll start first period with Ryan, getting some instruction. They'll go out for periods two, two, three, and four, the P E elective, and then they'll debrief with Ryan at the end of the day. Another thing we're doing is, so I'm a former self-contained teacher, a DLC teacher, so I really focused on that and building Ryan's program. And we had somebody come in and do a little assessment of our program. They realized, and they made me realize, we didn't have anything for our students who were not in DLC but on I E Ps. So we've really been working with those students to provide some services. We actually got a program in this year for free called A Better Track. They're on the west side. It's two guys who by trade, they're juvenile rehabilitation officers. They work with students on the west side who have had, been through the juveniles, get them work-based skills. They've created their own company now where they work with different school districts with students with disabilities and they give them job training skills. They'll take them out to jobs and watch their interviews and give them feedback. They're very hands-on. They give a lot of information. They come and to here one day a week, every week, working with our kids to prep them to be successful at their high school as well.
You know, thank you for sharing because when Mr. Michael was talking about, you know, what, what are we providing for kids? I think, you know, some of this work, work-based training and workforce development has been really exemplary work from West Valley. So I appreciate you sharing that.
If I may, Peter, I'd like to ask Luke and Kevin to, you know, did I hear, or I think I did. Maybe it's just something I wanted to hear, that you've got our students in the elementary grades and beyond from the presentation where we've kind of gone back to or gone to a mastery promotion rather than the archaic A to F grade. And the other was that, you know, the graduation on time, which most people take is eighteen. And I know that a lot of these kids, a lot, I taught special ed for quite a few years and returned at autistic kids, high achieving and otherwise. And a lot of them went on to be real successful in their venue. But it took a lot of time to develop a relationship and find out what that interest is and to develop it. And I was wanting to, and I think I did hear that we're on track to do that through the programs that you're looking to set up and the changes that you're proposing we make.
And maybe you could talk about how the use of technology that we now have in the district and the use of the station rotation model for instruction, how that lends itself to having us have adults being pushed and the use of the stationary rotation model for instruction, how that lends itself to having us have adults being pushed into the classroom rather than having students pulled out of the classroom. And then also, as we're talking about universal design for learning, various ways to meet standards, that we do have this badge book now that's been developed in pre-K, Kinder First, and piloted in Second, which also I think would help to, to facilitate the mastery-based learning like Mr. Meyer was saying.
I think there's a couple of things that Dr. Finch is speaking to is standards-based grading. I think that they're at the middle level, that's been the real focus this year. And so that's going to be, and then with the badge book, that also hits upon, we're looking at, at these standards and skills. I, and then also that co-teach model of being able to bring another teacher in and really meet the needs of students and be able, and that collaborative structure. And then there's also been a lot of focus on PLC work, again, focusing on that collaborative piece so that we're really working together to get what students need. So yeah.
All right. And I have one more. I know we have several families in the district that have students that are hearing impaired. I know that we don't, we don't have a deaf ed program where those students can access that. I believe there's one in Yakima. Some of our residents in our, in, in our district can't access that program because they're out of district. Where are we at with, with helping those kids out?
Yeah, we, we don't have a lot. And so that's one of the situations. We do have a relationship with Yakima School District and so they've been able to provide us some support. I don't think I'm allowed. I don't think they want me to share how much they're participating because they're only, they're only really giving it to us. But yeah, they give us some support. And we do have a couple of interpreters. One is a district employee and then we contract with the outfit, I believe, called ASL Professionals, who provide our, our interpreters for the rest of our students. We do have a teacher, he's not currently in this role, but he is qualified to be a teacher of the deaf. We have used him in the past in that role. We haven't had a need for that role for multiple years. So I believe right now he's in middle level social. And if we have the need again to have a, a student who needs a teacher of the deaf, we would definitely be asking him persistently if he would move back into that role. So that's kind of where, right, I think right now we have less than five students who are accessing some substantial services in that area.
And real quick, I would also say that, that it kind of demonstrates our inclusionary model, that those students who, who have those needs were finding ways to make sure that they're with their genuine peers and they're progressing forward and when we're meeting their needs while they're still staying with their genuine peers rather than having a separate program for them.
I would just like to say, I am a graduate of our deaf ed program. And I got very little of those extra services. I, and I appreciate the inclusiveness that I had going through the program. In fact, my parents refused to let me learn sign language, so you can thank the man right behind you.
There was a time we were ready to recover, just to get that education. Mark, you have a really good comment about there are kids at the high school who probably need the extra help but don't get it because they don't qualify. And that's, that fits all the way through. And the point that we're working on with the universal, that does design of EDLU, universal design of learning, is that you have regular ed and special ed people working together. And so even the kids who are not qualified but needed can get the same help in a classroom, in a regular ed classroom, as the special ed kids who by scores qualify for it by training. And it's going to take a real mindset change, I think. I think in order to get all of our teachers to the point where they're all willing to like co-teach and they're willing to work with all kids. Too often in the past, I was a special ed director here one time and not way too many times I heard about my kids. The special ed kids were my kids. They weren't the school district's kids, they're my kids, special ed's kids. We're trying to get away from that, totally away from that. And by training our staff and by changing our mindset and leaving those kids in a regular ed classroom and having teachers trained and able to co-teach, which is a trick too, we don't have to have the resource groups. We're going to get, and we can provide the same instruction to all our kids that need it, not just someone who's qualified, but all kids that need it. And that's why I really, this program turned me around, this new idea turned me around from being a person who, I really kind of liked working with my kids. I was a special ed teacher too. And I, and I like that, but now I see that if we can keep those kids in a regular ed program and we have red staff members who can work successfully with all levels of kids, that that's the best program and that's what we're working towards. I think that's what we're working towards.
I did like that, add a comment on what you're saying, Mark, I hope you'll put you on the spot here. But you're a general education teacher, correct? How many, when you got your degree, how many special education classes did you take? Two. And so I, I got my degree in special education. I took like 20, 30 special education classes. But I, I took very little content. But, and so that's the same thing for our, our special education teachers, our general education teachers in the school. We expect, traditionally, when we look at things, we expect our special education teachers to teach content, reading, writing, math, when they've been trained in how to work with disabilities and understand that and accommodations, modifications. And then we send our students to the general education where they've been taught in content and we expect those teachers to understand all the nuances of special education, all the disabilities, all the combination modifications. The system, when you really take a look at it, which we did and really examined how things are developed, the colleges, the programs, they're built for those teachers to work together. They're not built for them to work in two separate silos. And so that's what we want to do. We want to bring those teachers together. So you have the content expert and the, the specialist for their disabilities working together in unison to provide education for our students.
Well, thank you for the presentation. We'll probably need to move on, but I want to share with the board that we'll continue to bring examples of the universal design for learning. Again, that's providing students multiple ways to access the content, multiple ways for them to monitor their progress and multiple ways for students to show what they know. I do have scheduled demonstration by some of our teachers from the mid-level campus. Our eighth grades team will be presenting at our board meeting on, I believe it's May 24th, when we're going to be sharing results of our equity and inclusion work. And so this is definitely the inclusion side of that equity and inclusion. So we'll be sharing examples of universal design for learning on the main board meeting. And I sure appreciate our team here. So they did a lot to prepare, let's give them a hand. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you for that fine presentation. It was very informative. We'll go ahead and move on to public comments or non-discussion agenda items. So let's see here, we have. Okay, so we allow about 30 minutes for this section and we allow everybody to speak three. I'm going to go ahead, everybody on the boards, okay, just allow 45 minutes for this, these individuals to speak. Anybody okay with that? And we want to make sure we get the audience on Zoom as well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for the public comments. And I will just go down the list and kind of alternate. So Verna Hall Wisner, if you would step up to the podium and microphone, if you would like to speak.
My name is Verna Hall Wisner. My family of eight, or there were eight of us, eight kids, and my uncle had four. And we all went through West Valley District. And the teachers said, because there were 12 of us, there was one time, one year, my family had two kids in the same, my, my uncle and my mom and dad had two kids in the same grade. But the, the teachers kept saying, well, these whole kids never stop coming. I have a couple of rhetorical questions to get me to my point, if that's okay. You are mandated by the state to, to put this gen, gen, this gender ID program in the schools, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How much money is that costing or do you know yet?
Not sure.
I think we need, I think we need to, I, I think we need to review the ground rules pertaining to public comment, Mr. President.
Well, okay, I'm just.
And I'm, and it's, this is the awkward part and let's time for a second.
Yeah.
This is, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. This is not the, the section where we are going to directly interact with the conversation. This is your public comment section to us. We will listen and hear, but we are not going to comment at this point in time.
Okay, that's fair, you understand that. The reason I ask that question is because I'd like to know what, what, how much money goes to the special ed department and how much money will be deployed to the gender studies? And how many students there are in special education in the district? And how many transgender and whatever name they choose to go by are in the district? I wanted to know if the money was being applied where it was really needed. And it seems to me that the money could be better spent on the kids with special needs than to teach. And I don't even know what you're teaching. That was going to be another question of mine, but I'll let it go at that. I'm just questioning the wisdom of it. And if it's mandated by a law, if the law came down that you cut off the years of the student, would you do that too? There comes a point where you have to say no. And I'm wondering how many of your patrons in this district will say no come the next time they want to pass a levy or a bond? Just questioning.
Thank you for your comment and we also appreciate everyone recognizing the time limit so we can allow as many people to speak as possible. I'm going to go next to any Zoom comment. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? All right, then I'll move to the next person on the list. Rhonda Edwards, if you would step up to the podium, please.
My name is Rhonda Edwards and I actually live in East Valley. But I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. My concern is that when you look at the way things are going, the Board of Education of Washington State has more to say in our children's education than our parents are permitted anymore. Yakima has recently accepted a proclamation that the parents are primary interest in their children. I think West Valley needs to consider doing the same thing. Yes, the Board of Education has the whole state of Washington to consider, but moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, uncles, aunts, we're concerned, we're concerned about our children and where all this craziness is going.
I thank you for your comment. Again, I will check with Zoom, is there another person on Zoom? All right, I will move to the next person on the list. I believe it's Anna, if you'd like to step up to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. It's in writing. Okay. Um, I wasn't expecting that introduction from the previous commenter, but that was great. So thank you. I stand before you to, representing my heart as a mother as well as the many other parents in the district and the community. I am submitting to tonight a resolution that the West Valley School Board affirm and approve the proclamation that parents are the primary stake in our children's learning. We know that when parents have a seat at the table, districts flourish. Parent involvement in schools, committees, and classrooms helps foster necessary transparency. Parent involvement in education is crucial, no matter our income or background. Students with involved parents are more likely to have higher grades and test scores, attend school regularly, have better social skills, show improved behavior, and adapt well to school. Not discuss other resolutions to things without being recognized as primary stakeholders in their lives. I have here the official signed by our mayor and approved unanimously by the city council members, city of Yakima. The proclamation recognizing parents as the primary stakeholders of their children's education as well as proclaiming February as National Leadership Month. Our expectation is that you as a board, Mr. Mokel, Mr. Jager, Mr. Finch, Mr. Strom, Mr. Thorne, or Mr. Myers, our expectation is that you as a board will do the same for our district. Heather is going to read the proclamation, the proposed resolution. And I have a copy for you all tonight as well as I've recently sent it to your email. Thank you for your time and I look forward to your confirmation of this in the upcoming meetings.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to the next person, Heather Harrison.
I'm also the parent of two children in the West Valley School District. And I want to reiterate what Anna said and encourage the board to pass this resolution affirming parents as the primary stakeholders of their child's education. I would like to go ahead and read the West Valley School District Resolution Regarding Parents as Primary Stakeholders and Establishment of a West Valley Parent Advisory Board. Whereas the parents are the primary determiners of if and when to bring a life into the world, whereas the term stakeholders is defined as persons with an interest in determining an outcome. Whereas the parents are definitely interested in the outcome of their children's lives, by definition, parents are the primary stakeholders in determining the healthcare, safety, well-being, education, both religious and secular, and future of their children. Whereas parents are the primary stakeholders in their child's education, education as codified in the constitutions of the states of North Dakota, Virginia, many other states of the United States. Whereas countless counties, political subdivisions, and school boards across the nation have passed legislation and are resolutions supporting the concept of parents as primary stakeholders of their child's upbringing and education. Whereas parents are affirmed as stakeholders, they have the unalienable right to be part of the political process, be heard by the elected members of their school districts and make decisions regarding their child's education. Whereas parents as the primary stakeholders and educators need to communicate with each other. other to positively reinforce every child's success in the educational process. Be it resolved that West Valley School District Number 208 affirm parents as the primary stakeholders in the upbringing and educational success of their children. And be it further resolved that the West Valley School District 208 establish a parent advisory board to discuss current issues involving their children's education, let parents know their concerns are valid, and they have a voice in the system, and add transparency to decisions made regarding their children's future. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. I will once again check to see if there's any comment via Zoom. No comments there, thank you. We'll go on to the next person. Can't read the writing very well, I'm sorry. Is this? Davy Rod? Is there Davy Rod? I can't make out the writing. Middle initial is a D. All right, I'll go ahead and move on to the next person. If I should overlook you by the end and you haven't spoke, just raise your hand or something. Oh, not requesting to speak, never mind. Joy Herb. You would step up to the mic, please.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Joy Herb. I live in East Valley. I have four children, but I came over here because this issue of gender inclusive schools is personal to me. I personally was flashed in a women's dressing room by a trans person. And question is, when, when this happens, how, how will you respond? How will you protect girls, even if it doesn't happen? How will you protect girls who fear that that might happen, who feel threatened by the policy? I hope they will not be gaslit. And that parents, if this happens to their girls, and you don't have a proclamation, resolution, or a policy that says that you recognize parents as a primary stakeholder in their children's lives, that's not gonna be a pretty sight. I know WASD and these other state organizations are requiring you to enforce this policy, but you're the ones that have to deal with the backlash when it goes wrong. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment as well. Matt Brown.
Good evening, School Board. I come to you as your city councilman of District Six, representing the citizens and parents of this lovely district we call West Valley. You know, I wanted to say thank you, first of all, for serving on the school board. I've been on your side of the aisle, I've been on this seat, and it is hard hearing backlash and different complaints and different things that are going on, especially things that you feel like are out of your own control and stuff that is being mandated from up top. You guys get to get the full brunt of the public, and it's, it sucks. It sucks for you, but the reality of that is, is these people will support you. They will support you if you listen to them. And I want to affirm the parents tonight with, with something that I think is really valuable. We can talk about, I know I actually emailed you guys today about the gender inclusivity with the bathrooms. I'm not gonna talk about that tonight, because that'll be for a future time. But we can't have discussion. I have two kids. We can't have discussion about all of the other issues that are going on if our parents are not at the table with us. As we look at everything that's going on in this world and what's, what is being asked of you as a school board from people you guys probably don't even know, to be honest, the parents are the ones you're responding to. If we can't bring them to the table, we're failing as representative government. So, tonight, I would ask that instead of, you know, making sure that you really read that proclamation, one of the things I was really proud about as first thing in actually a city council position to do, parents came to us frustrated, very frustrated with the system in general, all over the county, saying, what can we do, Matt? What can we do? And they brought the resolution, and I went, well, I'm not, this is not my purview, right? I'm in the city. I said, but you know what? If an elected official tells you no, right? You've gotten nowhere again. And that was not my response. My response was, let me figure out what we can do, not what we can't do. And as an educator, as sitting on this board, so often we tell our school students, this is how we can do this, this is how we can do this. But when it comes to our parents, it's typically no. No, we can't do that. We're being mandated to do this, we're being mandated to do that. And so when we wrote this proclamation, all seven city council members voted yes unanimously to make parents the primary stakeholder in our child's education and upbringing. So tonight, before we talk about fixing other issues, I would ask you to truly make the primary stakeholders. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to Mr. Borden, John Borden.
My name is John Borden. I've born and raised in West Valley. I've lived here my whole life. I'm proud of our school district, but I have real concerns of the direction we're moving in the future. One particular thing I'm really concerned about is gender identity in K through third grade. I ask a question, and I know you can't respond, and it's really a shame that the community shows up and asks questions that we can't have a dialogue. I personally think that's ridiculous, that all you can do is listen to us and get back to us individually, when this is a group, community meeting that we should hear each other's positions. We never get to hear your positions. Is gender identity K through three being taught currently, or is it going to be taught in the West Valley School District? I would like to hear some responses, but I know you can't. The community wants to know each of your positions on this particular question. I request an email from each one of you, so we, stating your position, so we know where you stand on this issue. I also, I also know in particular, is gender identity K through three fall under state law, or is it fall under local school board policy? I know there are other items that fall under state law, but I'm asking about these young, tender kids, what is, if that's state law? You may call gender identity by some other names, like social emotional learning, or state health and education, whatever it's currently called. And those other phrases are used to avoid controversy. We still want to know, related to gender identity K through three, what each positions are. Is it the, is it the parents' responsibility and right to have that dialogue with their kids? Or is it the school districts' right to discuss gender identity with our children?
This is of real concern, and we need to know on this and other issues where you, the school board members stand, so we know who to support in the next election.
All right, thank you for your comment. Is there, I will check again on Zoom periodically. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak? All right, would you connect that person, please?
This is Heidi Mokel. Am I connected? Yes, okay, I'm getting it. All right. Am I connected now, folks? Am I connected? Board members, can you hear me?
No, it's not very, it's very, it's too faint.
It's, it's too faint. I'll tell you what, we'll move on to the person, see if you can get that perhaps fixed, and we'll come back to her. All right, next we have Mr. Lewis, Ryan Lewis, I believe. You would step up to the mic if you have a comment.
How you doing? My name is Ryan Lewis. I've got two kids in the West Valley School District, and I just wanted to ask a few questions. Some of it was already answered tonight. There's been some, it sounds like we have to adopt the gender inclusive schools. It's been pushed down by the superintendent, but I've also heard some verbiage of, that maybe conflicts that we have to accept that. So I'd like to know in an answer, we need to fully accept this, and what points we need to actually accept. And I'd also like to say that my family and I support the proclamation, and I'd like to have a response on that also. In some of this acceptance, I know that you guys are a small group, and you believe that you're doing the best you can, based off of your feelings and what's in your heart, and the best interest of the parents and the schools, the school district, and I do appreciate that. What seems to be missing, though, is obviously parents' input. This is the most people I've ever seen here tonight. I've come the last three or four times, I've never seen more than about six people here. So this is great. I'd like to see a response to know that, could we send out surveys to find out our parents' beliefs around these things? You know, how they feel about it, whether or not we approve the things that are going on in regards to the restrooms, the gender stuff, and sports. And I'd also ask the, about the bathroom and locker room situation. I see that there's some provided options for people who don't feel comfortable. I actually feel that if this is, if we're gonna be forced to follow these guidelines, I don't feel like this goes far enough. I believe providing a single stall for people in an office or a locker room can accommodate all the kids who maybe don't identify differently and are going to use their restroom or locker room of choice and feel uncomfortable. How are we gonna have all those kids going through at school breaks if there's 20 or 30 kids? How are all these kids gonna get changed or ready for sports on time? I would like to know if there are any other options provided for maybe providing different types of locker room or bathroom facilities, things to where we can prevent, protect our children more from people who might want to abuse the openness that we're now allowing in bathrooms and locker rooms. But I'd also like to say that although it sounds like this getting shoved down our throats, I don't actually, nor does my family and many people I've talked to, support the, the sports, you know, universal, you know. Males are born genetically different, and it's unfair to women who are in sports right now to have to compete against someone who has larger lungs, larger heart, different bone structure, different muscle structure. I understand that that might offend some people that, that want to get out, but, okay, but I just don't think that that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to get the Zoom speaker on, see if that person can get back to us.
Okay, are you able to hear me now, board members?
We can hear you well, thank you.
Awesome, thanks. This is Heidi Mokel. I'm a second grade teacher at Cottonwood. I think I'd like to respond to Mr. Borden, because I probably have a better idea what's going on in K three than, than our board members, since I live it every day. We do not have any gender identity curriculum. We do have social emotional curriculum called Mind Up, which teaches the kids about parts of their brain and what each part of their brain does, how to listen to their body systems to know when they are getting angry, when they are getting fearful, when they are getting upset. Our social emotional curriculum teaches them how to be a nice person, how to share, how to work with a teammate or work with a group when we're working on classroom activities. I have yet, in these whole discussions, had a parent ask to see that curriculum or ask me any questions. I would be happy to schedule, and I'd like to offer to Mr. Borden, if you'd like to come in and sit down and look at the social emotional curriculum that we use, I would be happy to do that and schedule that on, on one of my prep times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mokel. And the last person we have on the list who has requested to speak is Ashlyn Spencer. If you're here, would you step up to the mic?
Hi. As a student in West Valley High School, I have personal firsthand experience with this school. I have insight and real experiences that not anybody but me and my fellow students have encountered. And to clarify, not even teachers and especially board members can have a complete understanding of my school and what goes on within the classroom, bathrooms, halls, parking lots, social media, and outside of school. West Valley is already out of control, to put it lightly, when it comes to monitoring discipline. The amount of students that skip class or leave school whenever is huge, and I know the school is aware of this fact. I mean, we have random lockdowns to catch the kids who choose to skip, but I mean, but I have heard it from the teachers themselves, there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about the discipline. Most of these students that make these choices have a have own life, mental disabilities. And other agendas that don't allow teachers or administration to make punishments that justify and fix the problems. Some things. Same thing goes for the for the amount of students who vape and do illegal drugs in the school bathrooms. And did you know even the classrooms? So I ask you, if you can't stop students from skipping class, doing drugs in school bathrooms and more, just topics that I could go into. How are you going to monitor and stop someone from being assaulted in a school due to the laws that you get to choose? Now, leading off that question, I want to add, no, I want to start off and say, I I as an individual have no issue with how people choose to dress, act or identify themselves as. My issue comes down to when my safety and rights as a woman are taken from me. As women, we are already facing threats when it comes to men and people of this world and some of your students are those threats. Most women don't feel safe going alone, but a bathroom should be a place where no one should feel threatened. If anything, a bathroom should be a place of safety, a place where a girl in the school can go after being catcalled or verbally abused by students in our school. But you put this law in place and many people will lose this safe, safe place. So just, just a small percentage will feel comfortable. As a female, I stand for all and I'm here because I'm scared, I'm scared for the females who identify as opposite gender who have what happens when they. When that said student goes into the boys bathroom gets taken advantage of. What happens when you get guys who take advantage of the new law and will creep on girls in the bathroom? Because you can't question what they're doing if they if they say they're a girl, you have to feed into it. If you doubt, there is a slim chance a guy would fake being trans, then you are uncomfortably mistaken. This is a reality, there's, there's already a trend where guys will act gay and state that they are so that they can go to girls' houses and who knows what happens then. And if you're and if you you're thinking this is a school, no one actually assaulted and no one will be harassed. Again, you are very much wrong because there are students who walk these halls that have been accused of sexual harassment, assault and. And you guys as board members and out of all people should be aware and and to take a blank eye to this situation would be incredibly unprofessional. My greatest fear out of this this all is that people will choose feelings over safety. And I know that there are people whose whose students are directly affected by this this, but I please beg you all to listen to my fears. What happens when you have your first rape victim? What what will you do then? What what happens if you're it's your very own student? What happens when boys and girls take advantage and it's funny to say, but what happens when you have your first baby conceived in the school's bathroom? I understand you guys will lose funding for this for this school, but really choosing funding over safety, sounds like a lawsuit is about to occur. If you consider my statements outrageous, I can agree, I can't imagine these things will happen right away. But in five years down the line, 10, it'll be be people will take advantage of it. And it will be due to the laws that you allow and it will go unnoticed, just like everything else.
Okay, thank you, very passionate. We appreciate hearing from students especially, so thank you. I will check one more time to see if there's a Zoom comment, there is one more, can you connect that person, please?
Buenas noches, me escuchan. Hello.
Hello.
Hola, buenas noches.
I can't understand you. Oh, okay. No español.
Mi nerva, me interpretas por favor.
Do we do we have somebody who can translate? Please, okay, we're trying to help the person there, let's deal with that first. Does she have somebody with her who can help us?
Pero lo. Me están escuchando ahorita a mí ellos.
I can't understand her.
Pero como digo. No, pero si no, yo me entiendo por ni modo.
Okay, then. Okay, I. I said no español, no comprende, is that it?
Okay, perfecto, gracias.
Okay, gracias. All right, we will, maybe you could, if somehow she can understand, next time we have a meeting, she could have someone available. We'll try to have someone here who can interpret for that, so thank you. All right, again, thank everyone for their comments. Just want to remind everyone, is there another one? Oh, I'm sorry.
Llame mi oficina mañana y también ayudar con la manera de papar. Our family engagement coordinator, so llame a mi oficina mañana. I asked her to call my office in the morning and we'll have translate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we get that other person connected and get that? That should be our last comment for this section.
Am I connected now?
Yes, you are, thank you.
Hey, thank you, my name is Laurel Brunson. And just had a comment. For various misandry reasons, was not able to make the meeting in person tonight. But I sure would like to hear. After after somebody has spoken, I'd like to hear the applause, I'd like to feel like I'm a part of that. Part of the meeting, it gets muted immediately as if there's nobody there or cares. And I know better. I heard one of the folks speaking amazed at how many there were tonight, but you wouldn't know it by attending a Zoom meeting. Just a suggestion. And I thank you for your consideration. And thank you for serving on the board. It's a tough time, it's a really tough time. As a taxpayer in this, in this district, I'm. There's been four. Well, three generations now that that have been through West Valley District, a bit of supporter the whole time and I would love to continue to be a supporter, but. I don't appreciate my tax dollars being spent teaching CRT or anything to do with BLM and certainly not this transgender. Garbage that's being forced down our throats right now, I just I just resent it. As much as I do having to pay taxes for abortions, but this comes so close to home. It infuriates me and and I'm almost to the point where I'm going to just say, okay. I'm done voting for levies if this is how my tax dollars are being spent. And that right there is where I'd like to hear the applause, I know it's because it's been muted or shut way down, I'd like to hear that, please. Thank you for your time and I'll say good night.
Okay, thank you for your comments and we're going to close the public comment section at this point. Is she still available, let's take that last comment if she's available.
Me pueden, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there we go. Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Because she was on the other channel translating, so we had to get off.
I I was translating, but I am here all the time. But Mariana is going to be here with us as panelists, she's going to give her comment and I'm going to translate for her.
Hello, buenas noches, me escuchan.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Si, si te escuchamos.
Okay, este bueno, mi comentario va un poco dirigido a estamos hablando sobre educación especial y sobre educación para niños transgénero.
We are talking about special education and we're talking about transgender education.
Estamos hablando en ambos casos de inclusión.
And in both cases, we're talking about inclusion.
Entonces yo quisiera abrir un poco el para que pensemos en que así como los niños especiales, los niños que necesitan educación especial tienen una condición. Y aunque queramos, no pueden ser tratados igual a los niños regulares.
And just the same way that we see that special education students have a certain condition that says that they need to receive special treatment.
Porque simplemente su condición no se los permite.
Because their condition demands a special attention.
Los niños transgéneros son iguales, tienen una condición que nadie está diciendo que sea mala, pero es una condición.
And transgender students also have a condition that needs, nobody says it's wrong, but it's a condition.
Y no pueden ser tratados como niños regulares.
And they cannot be treated the same way that we treat regular kids.
Porque son diferentes.
Because they are different.
Entonces tenemos que pensar en eso y tenemos que.
So we have to think about that.
Y si los tenemos que incluir, tenemos que hacer un buen trabajo.
We have to include them and we have to do a good job doing that.
Pero tenemos que pensar en todos los niños, no nada más.
We have to be mindful of all of the children, not just the transgender kids.
Todos se deben sentir bien y todos deben estar cómodos.
Everybody needs to feel comfortable and everybody needs to feel safe, feel safe.
No podemos incluir a un grupo de niños excluyendo a los otros o.
We cannot include one part of our population excluding the other part of the population.
Creo que es todo, otra cosita que aprovecho.
And that's all I wanted to say and I want to take the floor to say something else.
Ya que ya que estoy hablando de inclusión, esto no estaba.
Since I am talking about inclusion.
No estaba en mi en mi comentario, pero bueno.
This was not part of what I wanted to say, but.
Me encontré con que no había nadie que me ayudara con la con la con la interpretación y sería bueno también incluir a esta parte de la comunidad que también estamos acá.
It would be also very important to include this part of the community that it's also part of West Valley, the Spanish speaking community.
Thank you.
Gracias. Okay, with that, again, we'll wrap up that section of the agenda, we're going to move on. Okay, this last comment. Can you identify who you are, please, I can put it on the list.
My 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 name is Rebecca Flynn. Before I start, though, I want to start with Father's Prayer and if you want to join me, you can. Our Father, which art in heaven, how be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in. And give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever, amen. Now I will start. I, Rebecca, will be addressing you on the issue of natural boy and girl sharing using the opposite. Natural gender in your in the bathroom or locker rooms. First of all, God states, we are made in his image and all mankind are created equal. Justice can be fair if you act with integrity. We already have human rights in place throughout United States of America that is protected by our constitution. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 of equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution has enacted comprehensive legislation prohibiting discrimination. On the basis of race, sex, religion and not origin in the workplace. As well as it is legally defined sexual harassment is a civil rights violation. Individual legal rights, those harassed in workplace or schools exist in the United States. Diversity is at its core means embracing differences among people with respect to age, class, ethnicity, gender, health, physical and mental ability, race, sexual orientation, religion, physical or mental ability. Race or sexual orientation, religion, physical size, educational level, job level and function, personal traits and other human differences. As well as the department's enforcement of Title 15. Of the Education Amendment of 1972 with respect to the discriminant base on sexual orientation and gender identity. OCR has long recognized that the Title 15 protects all students, all students, including the students who are lesbian, bisexual, transgender or harassed. From harassment, this is what they're asking you guys, only from harassment, other forms of sex, sexual discrimination. As long as it recognized, it prohibits harassment and other forms of discrimination against all students for not conforming to stereotypes. Notions to your masculinity and femininity to use against them. So the department has concluded that the same clarity exists, the Title 15, but is the prohibition, I'm giving you what the law is. The federal financial assistance from discriminating based on sexual orientation and gender identity in their education programs and activities. Doesn't mean that we have to, it says all inclusive and not to make it exclusive. Okay, so the majority are. The department concluded that same clarity exists. The majority are in love with their natural state of mind and body and likes to respect a separate bathroom and locker room for our body functions and like to fight. The teaching to young and personal blind of sexual orientation by the educational institution of thoughts and words and.
You need to wrap up. Okay, I'm going to ask you to stop at this point, okay, and be respectful of other business we have to take care of. Come on. Can you please? Ma'am, we need to move on. Rebecca, can you get every? Rebecca, can we move on? Please stop. All right, can we get, do something to get her off the stage here? Okay, we need to move on here, please stop. Please stop. Please stop. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, we have approval of consent agenda, which approval of minutes, vouchers, payroll, financial reports, employment contracts, resignation, retirement separation. Approval of leave requests, approval of summer school hires, approval of for teachers, summer school hires for paraprofessional. Approval of teachers for teaching out of endorsement area. And that's the extent of the consent agenda.
Dr. Finch, can I have you go back and start that over, please, there was a conversation going on?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we have approval of consent agenda includes approval of minutes, approval of payroll, the financial reports, approval of employment contracts. Approval of resignation, retirement and separations, approval of leave requests, approval of the summer school hires for teachers. Approval of summer school hires for paraprofessionals and approval of teachers teaching out of endorsement area, that's the extent of the consent agenda. Okay, are there any items that anybody here would like to pull out of that or can we go ahead and approve the whole thing? Is there anybody who has any issues with any of the consent agenda?
There's one item, page 135. There's one item, page one thirty-five. And I didn't look that closely, however, it just struck my eye that this is from Randy Sowers. It is a leave of absence request for an employee. That is from Randy Sowers. It is signed by Jerry Holstein, but it's titled from Randy Sowers. Like to pull that out and, and have that document.
Or should we just change clerical? It's, I'm sure it's something that just came from a template that we had used. So you don't necessarily need to pull it out, Mr. Moco. We can just make that clerical change, but thank you for catching that.
Yep.
If there are no other comments on the consent agenda and with that one correction, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to discussion items, budget development. There are two items there under nine A preliminary enrollment projections and eliminating pay to participate fee. I really like to see that second, that second item.
So I had shared in the superintendent's report previously that from now until the adoption of the budget for the upcoming school year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we'll have a discussion item on the agenda for budget development and we'll work our way through this process and here at the last meeting in April, we'll do that for the May and moving into June and having adoption of the budget in July. So, you know, when we first, first step in looking at the budget is to do a projection of enrollment because the enrollment drives the funding for the district. So take a look at this enrollment projection and then also as we move forward in developing the budget, we wanted to get direction from the board. One of the aspects that came out of our work, of the work group of looking at equity and inclusion in the district was ways to reduce barriers for our students, barriers to participation. And so we did want, get your feedback on a proposal to eliminate the pay to participate fees for extracurricular activities in the upcoming school year. As I previously said, we have Joe Conley here. He'll be covering both of these issues here for budget development and appreciate Joe's work on this preparations that he made for tonight's meeting. Well, Joe, go ahead and talk, talk to us about the enrollment projection and then lead it, lead the discussion on the pay to participate.
Well, the enrollment projection sheet, as, as Peter alluded to, we have the twenty-one, twenty-two budgeted student enrollment that we had. We used our twenty-one, twenty-two April enrollment just to kind of see, give you an idea of where we're currently at. And then for our twenty-two, twenty-three student enrollment for K through seven, we essentially did a roll up just because with the boundary changes, COVID, things like that, it was very difficult just to kind of assess things. For kindergarten, we use birth data. We took a historical look at as far as what increases or what kindergarten enrollment was compared to birth rates. We added a six percent escalator just based upon historical data. It was an average. So that kind of gave us our number for our kindergarten. And then for eight through eleven, we utilized a cohort data for the past four years. We eliminated the twenty-twenty-one data just because it was not sound. It was a, you know, it was COVID year. There was a lot of fluctuation there. We didn't feel like it was a good data set to use in order to come up with some accurate numbers. So we eliminated that, but used the last four because in twenty-twenty-two we actually had some, it stabilized. It came back to what it was previously. So that's what you have for the ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth as far as enrollment goes. And that's kind of where we got our data set from, but this is preliminary. We're still assessing kindergarten enrollment, kindergarten registration and those types of things and still assessing enrollment trends overall.
So with that COVID year, I know that the, the kids are currently grade, many of those families decided to keep those kids at home and our first grade numbers are quite low.
Correct.
I see that we're projected to be about fifty kids higher next year. Are we anticipating? Is that a projection just for number sake or are we projecting that those fifty kids are going to be back in classrooms?
Um, are you, are you taking, you're talking about the twenty-one, twenty-two enrollment piece?
I'm talking about the, uh, we're three, three thirty-four point three four.
And we have, we have from first grade, so you're rolling up, so it's three thirty-two. So we're expecting like a two drop as far as where we currently were and we use January numbers when budgets changed to kind of do that. That's why there's a roll up. So you look at it from what the current enrollment is and you take that one grade further. Yep.
So we're not anticipating that those kids are going to come back.
We are not at the moment because we haven't seen it.
Yeah, exactly. That, that was, uh, Mr. Moco kind of stole the thunder there where I was going to share that in our budgeting this year, we had looked at last year's Kinder and it was so low and we thought maybe those students would be, so we had anticipated an increase at first grade that we did not see. And so we're now going to just do this, this roll up and not have an anticipation of additional students at this time. Remembering that it is a budget number and like Joe said, the initial apportionment is based on the budgeting, but then the OSPI goes to actual when, in the January apportionment. So we are funded on our actual enrollment.
So just generally speaking, are we planning any kind of an increase or just about the same number of kids?
It's about the same number of kids. So four thousand nine thirty-two is where we currently are at.
All right.
Perfect. Any other questions about student enrollment and that projection? Like I said, that kind of, that begins the budgeting process when we know what our anticipated enrollment is because that's our anticipated revenue. And then we'll build the budget from there. Next is the discussion on the elimination of pay to play. So Joe, can you share with us again the thought process behind that?
Well, in twenty twenty, the legislation passed House Bill sixteen sixty and that was related to the participation of students who are in low income in extracurricular activities. That bill was to aid increasing participation in extracurricular activities by creating equitable access to opportunities to improve academic, social and emotional outcomes. It also was to address barriers to extracurricular activities. So in that aspect, we looked back what the pay to play was as far as what the revenue was bringing in and then where the impact to House Bill sixteen sixty was. We would like to propose that we eliminate it altogether for all students. I believe extracurricular activities, especially sports are a part of the educational experience and we should not be charging for that and especially with House Bill sixteen sixty trying to drop barriers or trying to eliminate barriers for our students. I think we need to take that and start looking at further things that we can do, but this is a start and I'm pretty, I'm extremely excited about this. I've been working with the ASP advisors, our leaders about what exists for our students and families out there and what we can do to kind of help. And I think this is a starting point and I'm truly, truly excited about this. And it's, it's about the levy, the community support us. Let's support our community by giving back to them and, and not having to charge them for, for extracurricular activities.
Are they still going to be required to have an ASP?
We are working through that, but right now, yes. I'm red tape as far as ASB transfers and some of those things we're looking at counting on what we can do to help that. But like I said, this was a start of the process and I'm working with ASP advisors to kind of figure out some future plans and what we can do. We're definitely going to bring that to you guys as we get more concrete for their, House Bill sixteen sixty didn't come with a lot of, uh, they threw the House bill out there, didn't come with a lot of guidelines. So we're trying to navigate through that and trying to make sure that we do the right thing.
Mr. Conley, my concern with, you know, pay to play, I've always, I've had one for a long time.
Much agree.
In that it did prohibit for some kids participating. But doing away with it completely, that doesn't change the present culture and the way our community works because the coaching staffs, not at just this high school, but the high schools and the, and the other schools in the valley. Kids are required to participate in camps, visit other schools
Correct.
and all of that stuff all through the summer and winter if they want to play that particular sport. Just that alone prohibits the same students that we're going to try to help by eliminating the pay to play.
Well, the pay to, as far as you're talking about the revenue from it, is that what you're talking about or are you talking about?
I'm talking about for those kids, you know, what's best interest to those kids. And obviously, you know, the, doing away with pay to play is going to help a lot of them.
Oh.
But the way our system's set up right now, it doesn't prevent them from being excluded by the requirement to stay with that order.
I got you. I know, yeah, and that's, I like I said, this.
Year round.
Yeah, and like I said, this is a start to start going through that and we are, like I said, I'm working with ASB leaders, coaches or departments as far as figuring out what's the best to do going forward and, and try to eliminate as many barriers possible.
Right, and I think that's our discussions when we talked about the equity inclusion was that limiting pay to play and that, that doesn't mean that there's other costs involved, but at least it reduces the costs that you're paying to the school and of course there's other costs involved in, in that, uh, doing activities. At least this reduces the cost that is required by the school for the extracurricular activity.
Okay, first, I'm glad to see this kind of go away, so.
Super excited too.
Yes, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and on to again, public comments of discussion items. So if you have comments, they should be related to what we just discussed. Anyone have any comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to action items. So there's a number of them. Action items, approval of travel requests, approval of resolutions, release and settlement agreement, approval of bid for innovation center. So do we want to break these apart or do we want to? Okay, it's already having answers to that. So let's start with the first one, approval of travel requests. Anyone want to make a motion or is there any mo, any items you would like to pull out?
I'll make a motion to approve the travel requests one through five as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve travel requests one through five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Travel cre, travel request approved. Approval of resolution one through four there, twenty-two oh four, seven thirty-seven, seven thirty-eight, seven thirty-nine and seven forty. Would you like to, anyone like to break any of those apart? Any discussion?
I think Mr. Conley would like to maybe comment.
Yeah, please, please use the microphone if you could, so people on Zoom can hear Joe.
Yeah.
I did invite Rob from CBR eight. He's definitely a four words, more, more of an expert than I am in this. So if you had any direct questions in regards to the final acceptance, I did have a conversation with our attorney as far as what final acceptance means. It does not eliminate the contractor or from their liability with our warranties and items that are currently on that list. We do meet the thirteen box check mark as far as final acceptance goes. We do not have any items left on our list. That does not mean there's still things that do pop up, but those generally fall under warranty. Did I say that right, Rob? Perfect.
And Mr. Conley.
Yes, sir.
Would you explain for the betterment of the entire group that what does this mean in terms of, of funding and next steps financially for the project in passing these resolutions?
I can, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read my email I sent because it was, I thought I was pretty decent in that and I don't want to change my verbiage as far as.
Thank you.
I know that there is a question regarding the number of items that are currently outstanding. Many of those are some of the maintenance concerns, issues that have popped up because we do have occupancy of the building, but others are warranty. We still maintain warranties on many items and probably will have some items that arise even after this year. Sherbanel will continue to address these warranty items beyond this acceptance. We also have to remember each school has been used in its full capacity for the entire year and sometimes the only way to find warranty items is for the building to be used. The process of the board acceptance doesn't eliminate the GC and the subs from completing current war, warranty items that come up in the future. This is very typical on many projects. It also starts with the separation of warranty from occupied use such as I scratches gym floor usage and things like that. In which those are generally from district use and are addressed by our maintenance department. We are still encouraging all of our staff to communicate with their principals and place in work orders when they see issues arrive. The acceptance allows us to start the D eleven paperwork process to release retention to Sherbanel, allowing them to pay their subs while also allowing us to claim the final portions of our state match funds. I hope that was able to answer your question as far as the way I wrote that and Rob's assistance with that.
And so are all of the work orders that are open currently, are they warranty items or is there anything that's still an ongoing?
There is no punch list item. Majority of them are warranty items, yes. We just, I got an upload, I just talked to Kyle today from Sherbanel and we did get an updated list as far as what's outstanding and all those are warranty that we are aware of.
Any further questions?
I apologize, Rob. I thought maybe they had more questions for you, buddy. Okay.
Rob's welcome to speak if you'd like.
And I guess, Joe, I've, I've lived through a four-year project myself.
Yes, sir.
And so this is, this is a typical step, correct?
That is correct. And we've had a very successful project and like I said, I, I think I even wrote it in my email as far as Sherbanel has been a very, very accommodating partner in this entire thing. We are, I, I will be honest with you, I'm very impressed.
Okay.
With that, then I will make a motion to approve all four of the resolutions for, for the record. That's twenty-two oh four, seven three seven, seven three eight, seven three nine and seven four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We have a motion. So we'll go ahead and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, let's see, item C, approval of release and settlement agreement. We need to have any discussion on that.
So just with the projects that we had, some of you in Apple Valley, there was an issue with the playfield at Apple Valley. We were able to come to agreement with the city of Yakima and I did receive a text message that the city council approved the release and settlement agreement earlier this evening. We have a joint statement that will be released tomorrow with the approval from the West Valley School Board as well. And then that'll share information and be very transparent about this release and settlement agreement. But this is a, a good thing for the district because we have a resolution now and we'll be able to complete the project.
Thank you.
With certainty. That's an important piece of this puzzle that, um, and I'd like to, I'd publicly acknowledge the work of, of our construction team, Rob, Matt, Joe, everybody coming together. It's been, it's, it's been a road, but it's one where I'm very pleased with, uh, very pleased that we're able to move on with some, uh, and get this thing and get this project done. Because this has been a very successful project.
Thank you. Sure has. Very proud of the team that, that handled all of this and we're very happy with the results. So with that, um, we'll go ahead and somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve release and settlement agreement.
All right, we have a motion to approve the release and settlement agreement. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of bid for innovation center.
All right, this is a project that had gone out to bid. Joe has worked closely with Jed Waters, our executive director for innovation so that we have a funding plan over multi-year to fund the project and so we recommend approval of this bid that was put up for the bid. So I'm not sure if you have questions or not. We have that memo and just recommend approval of the bid.
Does anyone have questions?
Could you explain the funding since you're up there?
Yeah, Joe, yeah, we just need Joe for the funding.
It's CTE funding and ALE funding. So that's for alternate learning experience and for career technical education. So that's funding that we get enhanced funding for students who participate in CTE and ALE programs.
And can you share over which, this fiscal year and the next fiscal year?
Yes, it is. We tried, we do, we did a creative payment schedule in order to make it work, but we did it over two school years.
Is it going to be done by next fall?
We're hoping. It starts, it starts with this. This is the first step in that process. And then I brought Jed and Russ here. They're the subject experts in regards to what the programming means, why it's important, why we feel this is the next step. And if you do have any questions regarding from them, they can definitely hopefully answer those because I'm not the subject that's with their either.
I don't have any questions. Does anybody else? No? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
All right, you guys had an easy job here. So we have a motion to approve the bid for the, for the innovation center. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item twelve, items arising. Does anybody here have anything that they would like to share?
Uh, just one. Mr. Strong. We, it was mentioned today by one of our, one of the speakers. But it's the, I said it on a Zoom meeting. But, uh, it's the, I said it on a Zoom meeting second week of April. And there's a disconnect communication wise with our Hispanic speaking community. And that came over loud and clear from the different participants in that meeting. Uh, both parents, constituents, uh, educators and Minerva. And I would like to ask that we do our best to try and close that gap.
Great comment. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Anyone else? Other comments? All right, if there are no further comments, we'll move on to thirteen reports. There are four of them, it looks like. Make sure it's not on the other page. Four reports, enrollment report, safety report, travel log report, high school A S B report. Is there any discussion or anything from anybody on those reports?
As I was looking through the enrollments at our elementary schools, three columns struck me as odd. At Apple Valley, we have four kindergarten classes that are sitting at fifteen, fifteen, fifteen and thirteen. A first grade, the first grade at Apple Valley is sitting at fourteen, fourteen, fourteen and twelve. And fifth grade at White Hollow is sitting at sixteen, twenty two, fourteen, eighteen. I look up one school ahead of White Hollow Summit View. Their classes are packed. Nineteen and the kindergarten nineteen and eighteen, uh, twenty six and twenty four in the, the fifth grade. Um, wondering why there's such a disparity in three of those classrooms, that they could be consolidated some way or, uh, it, it just struck me as odd.
Well, you brought a, a good point about our structure that we have in West Valley where we have the six elementary neighborhood schools. And it is difficult to have the prediction, uh, accurate across the board, every grade level, every school. And we, you know, we do the best we can. We did make an adjustment at the very beginning of the school year where we did consolidate a class at Cottonwood. And we had, um, that teacher that, for kindergarten at Cottonwood moved that teacher to Summit View where there was a, a need to bring the class size down at Summit View. Uh, we did talk about that we, uh, were not able to accurately predict enrollment for first grade this year. And that's why you see that low, uh, numbers in first grade at Apple Valley. And, um, and we are making those adjustments and, uh, appreciate the work that, uh, Joe and they've gone multiple times to every elementary principal, worked with them to get accurate prediction as best we can for, uh, the class sizes for next year. And, um, it, you know, it'd be great if it could be an exact science and the kids could come in perfect packets three, four, twenty five. But, you know, we, we know that's not how it works. And so we do the best we can. If we, uh, had less schools, uh, we would be able to, uh, have more efficient, uh, uh, staffing. But we know the value of our neighborhood schools in West Valley. And, um, if there's some classes with small class size, um, then, you know, we can do, our, our, we would prefer to miss on that, that the smaller class size and, and have that be what we have to run with for that year rather than to miss on the other side and have a really large class size. That's, you brought up a good point though. That's kind of structurally in West Valley, we have the six elementary schools, which does make it a little more to have our staffing prediction needs to be a hundred percent accurate.
And then the large number in some of you, setting at four hundred and ninety-four students. We just, we just spent a couple of years talking about rebounding. And it looks like we, we missed the boat on that. Um, we're, we're including an area now on sixty fourth of Washington that will go out to a tandem. Um, are we in need of redrawing the boundaries again?
Well, what we did is, you know, we know those families have been moved so much, uh, the kids have been moved. Uh, especially looking that, you know, they had to move up to the freshman campus for two years and then they got moved to the new school, which is a good thing. Uh, to disrupt those families again this year, upcoming school year, we just felt like we wanted to wait and, um, take a look at where the, um, you know, the, the student enrollment will be, uh, in this upcoming year. Take that, uh, one section, uh, that currently where there's no students, but there's housing being developed. Move that section to, uh, Tannan Valley where there's some room. And then take a look at where we're at. But you're correct. It's something that as a district, um, you know, we really should get, we need to be in the habit of taking a look at attendance boundaries and making slight adjustments as needed. Uh, that's really not the way we've been doing things in West Valley. Certainly this year with, we didn't want to disrupt those Summit View families again. But it, it should be something where periodically, uh, really on an annual basis, take a look at the attendance boundaries and see if they're uh, benefiting the, the students because we want students to be able to have a good experience and we don't want one of our schools to be overloaded. So it's a good point. Um, and we, I think it's a good rationale this year for not adjusting the boundaries, but we should definitely look at it next spring.
With the, uh, with the additional plug-in equipment that's needed at some of you for the, for those students. Um, because I am a specialist. Um, I see the specialists are probably getting thin at that school. Uh, what's the plan for, if these numbers stay the same there? What's the plan for, uh, helping those specialists out?
Yeah, that's still, we're still working with the principal and the best way to solve that. But you're correct, uh, we're not going to, you know, the, it's a track. So the contract, the teachers get a certain prep time and the specialists, uh, you know, have a maximum number of classes that they're able to teach in a school day. So we'll follow the contract and we'll be working, uh, with the principal to identify the, the way that we're going to be able to ensure that the teachers get their prep time and that, uh, we don't overload the specialists beyond what they're contracted for. I appreciate, um, your questions because those are all things we're, working on right now.
Right. Any more comments under items or, or under reports? I'm sorry. Any more discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to superintendent's report.
I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just share that we do have a group of educators from across the nation that will be visiting West Valley next week. We'll be visiting classrooms on May fifth, which is Cinco de Mayo. So we'll visit classrooms. It's, uh, the A A S A early learning cohort. And we'll be, be visiting classrooms focused on student ownership for learning. So many great practices that we have happening in West Valley and a lot of interest in what's happening in our classrooms. So looking forward to that visit. In the afternoon, we'll take the group to Y B Tech, where the culinary arts program will have a, a Cinco de Mayo, uh, lunch for us. We'll use the conference room there. Our ballet folklorico group from the mid-level campus will perform for our visitors. And then we'll debrief the classroom visits and have presentations, uh, on Cinco de Mayo. Then the next morning on May sixth, we'll have a presentation to the group by Ellen Galinsky, who wrote the book Mind in the Making. So she's a nationally known author. She'll be visiting here in Yakima and looking forward to. We also have as part of the final, uh, presentation for the visit, we're going to have a panel of teachers and a parent in West Valley who'll be sharing about the badge book. So we have the badge book. We'll have a kindergarten teacher, a first grade teacher and a second grade teacher. And that will be moderated by our assistant superintendent, Stacy Drake. So very excited to share these best practices that are happening in West Valley and looking forward to the site visit next week.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Finch. Getting near the end here. Item number fifteen, board reports, board development. Anyone?
I, I don't really have a report other than to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Uh, and especially those of you that hung with us for the entire board meeting. As somebody that comes to every single one of these meetings, it genuinely means a lot that you stay through the entire meeting. It's, um, it's very appreciate, have the utmost respect for everybody that hung with us tonight. So thank you for coming. Uh, many of you spoke. Some of you have emailed us directly. Um, I can, I can assure, uh, knowing every one of these board members, we're reading them all. And I'll just say, and there'll probably be a lot more comment about this, but um, on all of these issues, um, we all spend a, a lot of time trying to figure out what is in the best interest of the students of the West Valley School District given the parameters that we have in front of us. So there'll be more, more to say, but, um, I just wanted to express my thanks and gratitude for hanging with us tonight. Thank you.
Spilled a little bit of my thunder. I, just a little different. Uh, I'd just like to say, um, although I, I, I know that many of you feel that, uh, your comments may fall on deaf ears. I want to assure you that that's really not the case. Um, we do listen, uh, pay attention. I can't tell you how many times I've gone to meetings and when I get home, I'm sitting there, you know, eating my dinner late at night and thinking about some of the things that I've heard, especially from the community members. That's what we were elected to do is to listen to you. So we do. That doesn't always translate into things going exactly the way you would like to see them. Um, I can say for myself, maybe for some of the others, that there are times that we flat out agree with a lot of the things that you say. But again, as I said, we try to do what's in the overall best interest of the school district. So I just wanted to let all of you know that what we do is what we believe is in the best interest of the school district and we will not waver for that. Also, in the best of these kids, our kids, it's their safety and their wellbeing and their education. So as Mr. Turner said, thank you all. I do want to also echo on to the point of staying through this long meeting. We, it's not often we get everyone that sticks around this long in the evening. So thank you for that. With that,
One more thing. One of the things I really enjoyed during the election time was, was Mr. Strong and Mr. Turner, um, and, uh, Ms. Allman, um, online, being able to talk and, and to get to know them. Mr. Turner had an open house at the public house where you got to know him. Um, that's something that I would like to do as well, um, at some point to offer that, to be able to come out. So you do know my point of view better. Um, so hearing what, uh, one of the comments was tonight, um, in public comment. Um, and I encourage the rest of the board to, to, um, maybe have that practice as well so that we can share, um, where we're coming from.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, other than to echo Mr. Strong and Mr. Turner and thanking those of you that did stay with us tonight. And whether or not we agree is like they've reiterated, is not the major concern. At least to this board member. And I'm sure the others from talking to them. But it's definitely our primary focus is on establishing what's in the best interest of each and every one of our students within the district. That's the ultimate important fact that we face on every decision. And that's not going to appease everybody and we know that. But if I can go home and, and sleep well because I've done what we believe is in the best interest of our students, then we've had a good meeting. And I want to thank you for your opinions and your, uh, presentation.
Okay, with that, thank you all for being here today. We'll adjourn the meeting. It is nine eighteen P M on April twenty sixth. Thank you, everybody.